So we're about ready to start? Did I ring a bell?
Oh yeah.
Okay, welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and we'll start with the roll call. So, roll call.
Chair Sanderson? All right, Martenson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Vincent is excused. Commissioner Owens?
Oh, you didn't look. Yes. I wasn't excused.
Commissioner Oakfield is excused. Commissioner Chu?
Here.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Here.
Commissioner Khan is excused. Commissioner Wang?
Here.
We have it for him.
He didn't call me, but I-
Commissioner Merker?
Here.
Okay, we have the land acknowledgement. Would one of the commissioners like to read the land acknowledgement or to make some comments about the land acknowledgement? Land acknowledgement or something?
We can't hear a word you're saying.
We can read the land acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Okay, I, this is, there's a lot of people here, and there are going to be a lot of comments. We don't have microphones. We will speak as loud as we can. I ask you all for your kindness and understanding, and, and we will try as hard as we can. And it doesn't help to have lots of chats, so if everybody is helpful and kind of quiet, we'll be able to hear it. So, I'd like someone to read the land acknowledgement, or part of the land acknowledgement, or to speak about the land acknowledgement. Somebody wants to do that?
I can read it.
Thank you.
All right. The Planning Commission recognizes that the community we live in was built on the territory of the Kupun, the ancestral and unceded land of the Toteño-speaking Aloney people, the ancestors and descendants of the sovereign Verona band of Alameda County. This land was and continues to be of great importance to all the Aloney tribes and descendants of the Verona band. As we begin our meeting tonight, we acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of Berkeley, the documented five-thousand-year history of a vibrant community at the West Berkeley Shell Mount, and the Aloney people who continue to reside in the East Bay. We recognize that Berkeley's residents have and continue to benefit from the use and occupation of this unceded stolen land since the City of Berkeley's incorporation in eighteen seventy-eight. As stewards of the laws regulating the City of Berkeley, it is not only vital that we recognize the history of this land, but also recognize that the Aloney people are present members of Berkeley and other East Bay communities today. The City of Berkeley will continue to build relationships with the Lees John tribe and to create meaningful actions that uphold the intention of this land acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu. Our next item, item number three, is public comment. This is public comment for any items that are not, not on today's agenda. And because we have many people that probably want to speak at public comment for the items on the agenda, I'm going to limit this public comment to one minute per person. This is for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak on items not on the agenda? One minute.
I think one minute will be plenty. And since our director is here, Jordan Klein, when is the Planning Commission going to be offered in the hybrid format? I think it's really, it's not transparent for the residents of Berkeley, and it's long past time that this commission, as a planning commission, as important as it is, should be offered in the hybrid format so that the public can attend both online and in person. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to take Chair's prerogative, even though we don't usually respond to public comment, and ask the planning director to please respond to that question, or to Justin, whoever.
Certainly, and this is going to be part of staff announcements, but starting in our October meeting, we're going to be having hybrid capability here at the Planning Commission, so people will be able to join online as well as attend in person.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The San Pablo Avenue specific plan must ensure that all new developments facilitate and support a thriving community. This includes diversity and integration. The plan must facilitate not only a diversity of race, but socioeconomic background, family size, age, abilities, and lifestyles. We ask to limit the number of buildings geared towards single demographics, such as GLAs, senior housing, or only rentals. We also need opportunities for ownership and to limit clustering of such buildings. We need diversity throughout the corridor as well as within individual buildings. For integration, the plan should ensure that each new building design facilitates social integration among neighbors, maximizing opportunities for residents from different buildings to co-mingle with other neighborhood residents on sidewalks, in open spaces, for leisure time, or doing errands. We want to welcome new neighbors to San Pablo Avenue, but we won't be able to if new development designed prevent opportunities to do so, or if they create exclusion, getting built like individual fortresses with all private amenities within. Please design diversity and integration into the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. I'm Amy.
Thank you. Thank you.
The San Pablo Avenue specific plan will be decided this fall. Different from the corridor's plan, it's important for our plan to restore the past vibrancy of San Pablo Avenue, the theaters, the community gathering places, and to acknowledge that University of San Pablo was the gateway to the city, and that really makes it important to have ground-floor retail or live workspaces that feature artists, that feature galleries, that feature what Amy just talked about, of wide diversity of peoples and lifestyles and the legacy of different socioeconomic classes and such. It's also important to acknowledge the businesses on San Pablo now, as was acknowledged at the recent college show, the international small businesses that line San Pablo Avenue, that line University Avenue, and not to wipe them out. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, I don't think the mic is working yet. Yeah, yeah.
Plus, you have to speak in the mic.
Yeah, we did.
Good evening, council members. I'm concerned about the proposed San Pablo Avenue development will create more vacant storefronts, repeating a pattern that we already see along this corridor. There's multiple clear examples. For example, the corner of San Pablo and Parisin has a front-floor retail space that has sat empty for five years, and the space underneath Aquatic at Ashby and San Pablo across the street has sat vacant for two years. A statistical analysis executed in Philadelphia shows that neighborhoods with vacant properties are less safe, and empty storefronts undermine economic activity by reducing foot traffic and making areas feel unsafe. They also decrease sales tax revenue, and they create fewer local jobs. I'd like to see stronger requirements for developers to demonstrate realistic leasing plans and/or consider alternatives like dividing those front-floor retail spaces into smaller units for local businesses, and/or imposing vacancy fines, and/or providing free space to artists and nonprofits through what activate valuable space. Thank you.
While there is some community resistance to the proposed zoning, I am wondering why the Sacramento corridor is not being explored, because it is a high resource area. The homes there are selling one point two million, one point four million dollars, and there are a number of areas that actually, where there's vacant storefronts, or areas that really could be explored, where that actually might improve the Sacramento corridor from White to Alcatraz. I'm thinking of the area that's near Oregon on Sacramento, where we have this sort of strip mall area that's essentially persistently vacant, with the exception of the liquor store on the corner, and a little restaurant that's hardly ever opened and doesn't seem to have customers, one of its. And then further down, as you go down to Alcatraz, there's, oh, sorry. There's about three areas that really meet your qualif-
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Does anyone else want to make a public comment about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, next is the order of the agenda, and because so many people are here tonight, and I imagine want to talk about the corridor study, I've chatted with the staff, and we would like to make a, change the order of the agenda and have that item first, so that you, the other two items are more sort of administrative about the Planning Commission, and I think it would make more sense to try and do the substantive item first. Do we need to do a, we've got to take a vote or anything about that, or can we just change it? Commissioners, anybody object to that? Okay, let's, as far as I know, let's just change it. Okay, that will mean that you don't have to sit through the other items.
Thank you.
So let's see, we also have a chairperson's report. I don't have a report. Any committee reports? I don't think we have any committees. For commissioner announcements, I'd like to welcome Angela Wang. Commissioner Wang, who is the mayor's appointee, and that brings our commission to a full complement of eight members. So, welcome Commissioner Wang. Are there staff announcements?
Yes, thank you, Chair Martenson. Just a few staff announcements about upcoming Planning Commission meetings and some of the activity that has happened and will happen at the City Council. Your next meeting is in October, and you have two items there. You'll be looking at zoning ordinance changes for the implementation of SB six eighty-four and small lot subdivisions, which was an item you had a discussion a few months ago. You'll also have a small state law and technical edits package to look at. It's one of your occasional technical edit, technical edits of the municipal code that we bring before you. And as noted before, this will be the first hybrid meeting. For the commission, that doesn't mean much, except that the table is going to be over there, and the people are going to be over here, because the data point for that Zoom thing is there. So, that's the only change that Gerald likely noticed. In your November meeting, we have three items so far. We have one on zoning ordinance amendments related to by right development on certain opportunity sites. Those are zoning changes that we are required to do pursuant to the housing element. We're going to have a discussion about the status of the West Berkeley plan, and we will be approving the two thousand and twenty-six Planning Commission calendar. And that will be an opportunity as well to talk about the time, the start time of the meeting as well, which I know is something people want to talk about. We currently do not have any items scheduled for the December Planning Commission meeting. On September ninth, the City Council adopted changes to bring our ADU regulations in conformance with state laws. This was an item that you had taken up, and the second reading passed on September ninth. There are a number of items that you've considered that are coming to council in the future. On October fifteenth, the City Council is scheduled to hear the implementation ordinance for AD ten thirty-three, which will allow the separate sale of ADUs. On November sixth, there will be a work session that the City Council will convene regarding the San Pablo specific plan and the corridors rezoning. And also, tentatively in December, we are, again, tentatively planning on bringing the regulations regarding the undergrounding of utility transformers to the City Council in December. And that is the end of my announcements.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. So has any, everybody gotten a chance to look at the minutes from July sixteenth? And are there any comments about them?
No. I'll make motion approve.
Okay. Motion to approve. Did you catch that? One second. Okay, roll call for the minutes.
Chair Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent is excused. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakfield, not Oakfield, is excused. Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan is excused. Commissioner Wang?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so, since we've reordered the agenda, our next item is the corridor zoning update, the alternatives report, and we'll have first the staff presentation by planner, sorry. Could you remind me about your name? I'm so sorry. And I can't see your name, Clark. Even if it were long, I would be able to do it.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Katarra Ramakrishna. I'm an associate planner with the Land Use Planning Division, and I serve as the project manager for the corridor zoning update. Now, as part of this project, we have brought on a strong consulting team that by Rabian Associates-
Excuse me, could you speak right into the microphone so we can understand what you're saying?
Who have both expertise and local connections. I'm joined here today by Chris and Seneck, who will be presenting the zoning alternatives to you all shortly. So, this slide over here shows the overall project scheduling, with the star marking where we are today. Over the past few months, we completed the existing conditions report and held workshop one, which served as the official project kickoff. Most recently, we completed workshop two in late summer with three in-person workshops to present zoning alternatives to community and to gather feedback. From here, both the Planning Commission and City Council will review the options and select the preferred alternative. Our goal is to bring the updated zoning forward for adoption by summer twenty twenty-six. So, looking specifically at community engagement, we completed- Yeah. We completed the second round of workshops in August. Following today's study session, we plan to bring recommendations to the City Council on November sixth to identify an approach for each corridor. Additional engagement included one-on-one conversations with community organizations, and two meetings with the technical advisory committee. We also currently have a survey open on the project webpage until October tenth, and we encourage community members to share their feedback to, to that survey as well. Okay, so here's today's agenda. We'll begin with a presentation of the zoning alternatives. After that, commission will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions. We'll then open the floor for public comment. Following public comments, commission will be able to ask any additional questions. And finally, the commission will deliberate and provide directions on a preferred approach for each corridor. So, to sum up, today's meeting is to receive the Planning Commission's recommendation on a preferred approach, which will then be referred to the City Council for final decision. And with that, I'll hand it over to Chris to walk us through the draft alternatives in more detail.
Thank you, and thank you, Planning Commission. I'm going to try my best here to, I want to take this off here. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Great. Well, welcome everyone. Happy to see you all here. All right, so this project, the corridor zoning project, involves rezoning the areas of Solano, North Shattuck, College Avenue. Zoning is a tool the city uses to regulate land use, height, and density of buildings, and also their design. The need to rezone these areas was identified in the Housing Element Update, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. Specifically, Program twenty-seven of the Housing Element requires the city to increase housing opportunities in the highest resource and highest income neighborhoods. The key goals of the project are to expand housing capacity by encouraging new housing development through rezoning, foster equity and inclusion by creating opportunities for new housing development in high resource areas, support local businesses by adding more customers, and promote sustainability by encouraging housing in amenity entrenched rich areas. All right, so what is a high resource neighborhood, and why are these three neighborhoods considered high resource? A high resource neighborhood is characterized by access to essential amenities and opportunities that promote well-being and economic advancement. These include quality schools, safe streets, parks, healthy food options, access to transit, jobs, and other public services. The California Department of Housing and Community Development defines high resource areas as ones strongly associated with positive economic, educational, and health outcomes for low-income families. This map here shows that these three quarters are within the highest and high resource areas as defined by the state. And here's a detailed look at the three zoning districts in the project. We are looking at the CSO areas along Solano and the CNS areas on North Shattuck. We have decided to keep the CC district as is. And while the plan area includes all of College, South of White Way, we are now looking only at the CE Elmwood District along College. Much of that corridor is in the R-two-A district, which was part of the middle housing zoning project. The city has completed several specific area plans in the past fifteen years, including the downtown area plan, the south side plan, which was updated in two thousand and twenty-three, the Adeline corridor specific plan, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty. And then there's the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, which is ongoing concurrent to the corridor zoning update. And then there's also the middle housing zoning project, which was just completed this year. And here, you can see the reach of the middle housing zoning project. It really spans most of the city, and you can see it also includes most of the areas adjacent to these three quarters. The middle housing project increased the allowed density of these areas to allow a variety of multifamily housing types. Berkeley has seen the highest concentration of recent and planned multifamily housing developments in areas like downtown and the south side, and along corridors like San Pablo, University, and Telegraph Avenue, but little to no high-density development along Solano, North Shattuck, and College. There are some exceptions. There are two planned housing projects along Shattuck, a potential eight-story development at the corner of Shattuck and Virginia, and a seven-story development at the corner of Shattuck and Francisco in the CC district. That is now under construction. There is also a recently completed project in the R-three zone on College Avenue, and one project that's in the evaluation and approval stages at twenty-nine forty-two College Avenue in Elmwood. That project is a two-story mixed-use project. And here we can see where the existing zoning on Solano, College, and North Shattuck fit in with the other mixed-use zoning areas of the city. These quarters have the lowest maximum height standards in the city. The goal of the Program twenty-seven is to move these high resource areas up the ladder to provide more opportunities for housing. All right, I'm going into the alternatives. So, we developed two alternatives for each quarter. Alternative one, which we are calling medium density, it increases the base height by two stories on Solano and North Shattuck, where there are wider streets, and increases College's base height by one story. Alternative two, the higher density alternative, increases the base zoning by another story from that first alternative. So, plus three stories on Solano and North Shattuck from the existing zoning, and plus two stories on College. And here you can see how the alternatives compare across each quarter and the impact of the state density bonus law. Throughout this presentation, we are going to show the base heights and the project heights with a density bonus. Based on the state density bonus law and the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, we expect most projects to come in with a fifty percent bonus. So, we will be using that as our projected maximum height in our analysis and presentation. Predicting the application of the density bonus is not an exact science. The developer archetype actually has a lot of freedom in how they place the building area on the site, and each site has unique conditions. And that is why you're going to see a range of possible heights when we talk about the density bonus. I'd also like to know if it's possible projects may come in with a lower bonus, or they may maximize density bonuses up to a hundred percent by building more affordable housing. So, with a fifty percent density bonus, in these alternatives, new buildings would be allowed up to five to six stories under ALT one on Solano, and up to seven to eight stories in ALT two. On North Shattuck, buildings would be allowed up to seven or eight stories in ALT one, and up to eight or nine stories in ALT two. In Elmwood on College, where there is a narrow sixty-feet building-to-building dimension, in contrast to the other streets that are greater, eighty-five feet on Solano and ninety-four feet on Shattuck, buildings in ALT one would be allowed to go up to four and maybe five stories in some cases, and in ALT two, up to six stories. In addition to regulating height, the new zoning will also regulate where the building massing is positioned on the site. Currently, buildings are required to have a ten-foot setback from the rear property line, and then they're allowed to go up to whatever the full height is allowed. The new zoning is likely to create transitions down to adjacent lower-density properties, and the standard will generally push most of that massing up to the corridor street, but also allow for buildings to wrap around the corridor on the side streets. So, our analysis of the alternatives also estimated the likely build-out scenario along each quarter. This build-out would not necessarily happen anytime soon. It will likely take a decade or, or more for a number of the properties to redevelop. And I want to be clear here, the rezoning project is not a mandate to redevelop. It increases housing opportunities by incentivizing landowners through allowing more density on their properties and more efficient building types. But it is up to each landowner to decide what they want to do with their property. The city is not mandating or requiring any parcel to redevelop. But as planners and community members, we all want to have a better understanding of what is possible and likely to happen when rezoning is implemented. So, we did a parcel-by-parcel analysis of what we think is most likely to redevelop. We categorized each parcel into four buckets based on a likelihood of a parcel to redevelop. And you can see here, we would expect only about forty-two percent of the parcels to have a modest or better chance of redeveloping, and would expect really only a percentage of those may actually redevelop. And generally, we actually think redevelopment opportunity is pretty modest across each area. In today's market, new development is very hard to pencil out, and even on a good market, most of the parcels on these quarters have challenges to redeveloping. Challenges may include site dimensions, ability to access site parking, or just the size of the property is inefficient. And here you can see how these different potentials map across the quarters. The red sites are the most likely. They are the large sites, like the banks. The orange sites on this map, we believe, also have potential, but they're more difficult, again, for a variety of reasons, like overall size, narrow parcels, or sites that may require aggravation to get to an efficient size. And then you have the grocery stores. It is very hard to predict what will happen with the grocery stores. And here you can see how the redevelopment potential may be distributed across the quarters at the different alternative densities. Our analysis shows a rezoning project has the potential to add between a thousand and eighteen hundred units across all three quarters. And here you can see how the zoning alternatives move these quarters up that zoning ladder I talked about earlier. So, in addition to pushing the massing of the building up to the street, we developed alternatives for how the street facade is designed. Alternative one would allow the whole facade to extend up to the maximum height. This alternative is the most efficient from a building and cost standpoint. Alternative two is more nuanced. It would require an upper-force step back of the facade facing a side street. Then alternative three would require an upper-force step back on all street-facing facades. And here's a draft table of the three alternatives that's in the alternatives report. And I just wanted to, oops, there we are. And I also wanted to note a change that we are also proposing. We are also- We are also recommending removing existing restrictions on residential-only buildings. Currently, the existing zoning has a number of extra setbacks if a residential project was built on the corridor. It has a number of stepbacks that, really, I think the purpose is to make the building, the residential-only building, represent more of a house-type building. So we are proposing to remove these stepbacks that would allow a residential-only building to use the same standards as a mixed-use building. And here you can see how the building form may change if we include development standards to include upper-floor stepbacks. On the right, the facade steps back above the fifth floor, and then on the left, the building facade goes straight up. And then, in this example, on College Avenue, on the right, the facade steps back above the third floor, and on the left, the building facade again just goes straight up. All right. We also want to hear feedback from the planning commission on if objective design standards should be included, and if so, to what depth. This slide has some examples from other cities. We are not asking you to comment on them directly, but comment more generally if the rezoning should include objective design standards, and then to what level of detail do you think is appropriate? The last set of alternatives is on ground-floor use. So in addition to height controls, one of the other things we'll be looking at is where to require retail on the ground floor, and possibly allowing ground-floor residential in certain areas. We would like to get your opinion on this today. Here on Solano, the top alternative would require ground-floor retail, or at least retail-ready spaces along the whole corridor. The second alternative really looks to concentrate future retail activity east of Ensenada. And if properties were to redevelop west of there, saying residential ground floors would be allowed. And here similarly, on North Shattuck, you can see the areas in yellow are areas where we're contemplating allowing residential ground-floor uses and not requiring retail. And here you can see, on College, it's just a few parcels at the edge that we're contemplating not requiring ground-floor retail. All right. I'm going to end the presentation with a summary of the feedback we heard. So we kicked off the project with a virtual workshop in May, on May 1st. This event was about presenting the project background and listening to the community. We heard a lot in small-group discussions. We heard a lot about creating a diversity of housing types at all income levels. We also heard a lot of concern about parking and traffic. We also heard about prioritizing protecting all the great small businesses that make these corridors one whole places, and to maintain the charm of each of these neighborhoods. In August, we held a round of workshop two events. We had three in-person meetings, one for each quarter area. We had approximately 350 people turn out. The event started with a 25-minute presentation, and then we had an open-house event with four stations, including a station with survey questions. Now, at this event, we did hear a strong desire at the meeting for a town hall-style format. The team chose an open-house format because it gave the most amount of people the ability to talk with staff, ask questions, and provide feedback. And here's a little bit more detail about the participants of each meeting. As you can see, the crowd in each quarter tended to be more owners of property than renters by a large margin. The age demographic also tended to be, a large majority of attendees were over 55 years and white. Now, 29% of the city of Berkeley is over the age of 55, but at these events, about 65% to 78% of the participants of the workshop were over 55. In addition to the in-person meetings, we have a survey open to the public. We currently have over 800 respondents. Surveyed participants could answer questions about all three quarters or choose one quarter. We have about 600 people that responded to the demographic questions in the survey. And here we see there is a shift in the respondents' demographics to the survey versus the in-person meetings. For the survey, about 45% of the respondents are over the age of 55 compared with the 65% to 78% in the in-person meetings. And just to give you a little idea of the responses, I'm going to kind of go through the responses for each quarter. So throughout the surveys and the in-person meetings, we heard a lot about the health and well-being of these commercial corridors. We also see it in each of these survey results. The top priorities of each corridor were maintain corridor, retail vibrancy, and support existing businesses. Each corridor also recognized a need to maximize new housing at all affordability levels as a priority. And each corridor, we saw a preference to increase zoning in the overall area. And as you can see here on Solano, about a 2:1 ratio of support to increase zoning over keeping existing zoning. For North Shattuck, overall, there is support for changing the zoning, but the feedback from the in-person event had a lot of concerns about the impact of more density and height in the area. College Avenue had a similar distribution of opinion, with overall support for rezoning, but also a large group with concerns and desire to keep the zoning as-is. Now, this is all a very high-level overview of the feedback we've received. We had a number of great discussions and questions with many community members. We've heard lots of concerns about how the change will impact their communities. Parking was a key issue that was continually brought up, along with the overall impact of redevelopment. We only have time to share a little today, but there's a larger report summarizing the feedback from the in-person meetings on the website, and there will be a survey summary similarly after it closes. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Uthara, and look forward to answering your questions and hearing your feedback.
Okay, so now I'm going to list out the feedback requested from the commission. So in addition to feedback on the zoning update alternatives report, staff is requesting input from planning commission on a couple of these items. And we have listed out questions per corridor on this slide. Maximum base height. How to balance the city's housing goals with maintaining corridor character? Upper-floor stepbacks. What are your thoughts on requiring upper-floor stepbacks on street-facing facades? Retail and ground-floor use. Where retail should be required versus optional, and what strategies best support small businesses? Residential on ground floors. Under what conditions this should be permitted? And then looking at a couple of general questions. Support for existing businesses. Now, following the workshops, we asked our consultant team, including strategic economics, to research strategies for mitigating potential negative impacts. We will bring their findings back to the commission in the coming months, but in the meantime, we'd like to hear your feedback, any strategies you think we should consider. Next item, design standards. In addition to development standards, should the project team advance objective design standards? And lastly, are there other standards of community benefits that should be incorporated into the zoning update? And are there additional engagement activities you would like to see as this project moves forward? And yeah, thank you all. That's the end of the presentation. Now looking up to questions from planning commission.
Thank you. That was a very, very detailed and thorough report, very well organized, and I really appreciate you both presenting it. Are there any clarifying questions from the planning commission? Anything you'd like to ask the staff before we move to public comment? Anything that needs an explanation? Okay, now, if not...
Oh, actually, so could you restate the kind of question that is before us today? What is, what is, what are we trying to get to? Feedback on the questions from that table?
Yes.
And just a discussion, just a feedback on the questions that kind of bubbled up from the engaged participants?
We have no action, discussion.
And I haven't thought about how to organize it because there's quite a few questions, and some of them are, they're very different kinds of questions. So when we get to our discussion, I think I have an idea about at least how to organize it so that we make good use of our time. But I'm hoping it will work. Okay, we have, next is public comment. I see that there is, there are a lot of people here who I know want to talk about this. And I've been thinking, as we've gone through this, how best to, how best to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. I want to note that, you know, we're not taking a vote, and that the planning commission, I think I can speak for all the commissioners, we really do listen to what people say, even when we disagree. So I want to make, make clear that, you know, we're, we're listening, and that there may or may not be sort of impassioned speeches, but that doesn't mean that there's necessarily impassioned disagreement. So I'm, I'm very interested in keeping this as, you know, you know, civil as possible. And because I had experience with this a couple of months ago, I'm really willing to allow us to have two minutes per person, because I know people have a lot to say. But if people don't move quickly through this line, then I'm going to move, change it to one minute midway through. Because that's one of the things that happened last time, is that people took a very long time to come up. So please get in line first, say your piece, and when the bell rings, please stop talking. There's a lot of people here, and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
I just ask that while you guys don't eat the microphone.
Don't eat the microphone.
Now, this far away, just speak directly into it. You don't have to shout. It's not a microphone.
Okay, and there really is no reason, if someone says exactly the same thing that you want to say, you can say like, like that person said, okay? So, because there are a lot of people here. We put you here a long time. All right, go for it.
My name is Zelda Bronski. I'm a journalist who writes about land use. I'm also a former president of Thousand Oaks Neighborhood Association, and of course, you start the talking again, because I would like to be heard.
You can't hear. You know what? It's going to be very hard to hear everybody. Many people have soft voices. I don't know how the soft voice can always be better without the mic. Could you stop the clock, please?
She'll stop the clock. Hang on a second, please.
Try and be, you know, it's, you're not going to be able to hear everything. It's a difficult room. There's, the microphone's not great. Some people have slow voices. If we have to keep resetting the clock each time one person raises their hand and says, "I can't hear what you said," we really will be here until midnight. So try and do as best you can, both to speak loudly into the mic, and also to be tolerant if there's a few words you missed.
And please start this one over again.
Thank you. My name is Zelda Bronski. I'm a journalist who writes about land use. I'm a former president in the Thousand Oaks Neighborhood Association. I am also a former chair of the Berkeley Planning Commission. I object to planning staff suppression of free speech. The August 27th community workshop about upgrading, upgrading, excuse me, upzoning, big difference, Solano Avenue was the fourth meeting in a row in which staff has refused to allow questions from the public in the full meeting. I emailed planning director Jordan Kine about the ban. He wrote back, "Some people feel uncomfortable speaking in large groups, and he and his colleagues want to create a safe space for those people." I replied, "I know that, but there's no reason that we can't have a conversation in the full meeting, back and forth, not just a question and then next, and at the so-called open-house stations." The real reason staff won't allow give and take in the full meeting is that they're unwilling to risk a debate with their critics that would expose the problems with their plans. They want to create a safe space for themselves. Very Trumpian. The old homeowners, whom Mr. Klein had the nerve to deride at the Solano meeting by citing that awful Chronicle story about the doom loop, good lord, are paying for this plan. $600,000 for the huge consultant team, plus regular six-figure salaries for Mr. Klein and Mr. Horner. You are civil servants. Honor your office. Stop bossing us and start serving us with civility. Let us get into a conversation with you. Having a few people who know very little huddle around a poster and get indoctrinated by staff is not what free speech is about, and supposedly, this city is all about free speech.
Okay, if we don't get to the microphone immediately after the speaker, we're going to one minute.
Sorry, I just do not disturb from my phone. Hello, I'm Bryce Nesbit, and I'm here because I'm a fan of public spaces. I love walkable stores, local stores, local parks, things like that. And these corridors that are on the chomping, on the block now are really our best spaces. They're wonderful. They're walkable. They're beautiful. They're really great. And I'm concerned that you have a lot more work to do when a building is built to ensure that the replacement retail space is usable. Why? Because the standard form of construction is the podium building. We build the first story, and that's where the parking goes, and then the rest of the building, the housing, goes on top of that. Leaves a very narrow, thin, difficult-to-use retail space. And I don't think that this plan addresses the quality of the retail space that will be left, nearly enough when those buildings are rebuilt. That's where I think your work needs to be if you're going to do this. Thank you.
Christopher Kroll, thank you very much. I attended all three meetings, and I heard three times from these people, "Don't worry about your legacy businesses, your Mrs. Dalloways on College, et cetera." But I never heard why. It was never explained. If they're renting, how are they protected? So I'm hoping that since we were not allowed to have a free exchange of information with these people, that maybe some of you could gain to ask this question. How will the legacy businesses that create these commercial districts that all of us love and that have been more successful, how will those be protected? Or will we end up with another example of Center Street, which I lay at the footsteps of these people? They're responsible for the disaster that is Center Street. Secondly, the comment from Chris, I think his name is, "We expect 50% density bonus is likely." So they don't discuss 100%. Why? We're talking just because the planning staff, again, Mr. Klein and his staff, believe that that is the current business model. The current zoning you're working with has been in place for, since the 60s.
You're at the two minutes, and I'm sorry, it looks like the clock wasn't set when you started.
The clock was, I, I thought I had more time.
It has not been two minutes.
Ma'am, can I just finish? Can I just finish? I mean, you're going to do what you're going to do. I just want to finish my point. Only showing 50% density bonus is disingenuous at best, if not intentionally deceitful. Over the next 30 years of the life of this upzoning, we have no idea what the economic conditions are going to be. We, as a community, have the right to know what 100% density bonus on these three streets could look like, because they could very well happen, regardless of what these people think of the current situation. We don't want any more Center Streets. Thank you.
I appreciate what you said. Look, it's very hard. Look at how many people want to speak. We really do have to be careful.
But you said you want to listen, so listen.
Okay, thank you. I want to point out another issue with having the public comment in this way. Oftentimes, we say comments in this, and then we, the public comment is closed, and you have your discussion, and some of what we have said gets misrepresented and then dismissed, and we never have an opportunity to say, "No, that's not what I actually meant. That's not what I said." And so that is an issue with not having an open discussion. So, I'm sorry, I'm Janice Ching, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Berkeley Neighborhoods Council tonight. So I often, sorry, so it's, it's not surprising that people get upset when, when their comments are misrepresented and then dismissed. So I also heard that we need to make... So I also heard that we need to make suggestions and not just say no to things. So I want to make some con, some suggestions tonight. One, how does SB 9 affect this plan? Could SB 9, SB 79, sorry, allow even greater heights? If a rapid bus gets put in on, near any of these corridors, is the extra floor that you guys are suggesting in this upzoning going to be added on top of that? One suggestion I have is that SB 79 is used, invoked in any of these projects, that you don't allow this zoning upgrade to happen on top of that, okay? The other thing, you talked about, concerned about established businesses and their leases, so here are some suggestions. Can we require that a developer relocate any business they displaced for the entire construction period at the current rent and give them opportunity to return for at least one year at the old rent? Or if they move in as soon as, as soon as the building is open, this could prevent vacant storefronts? Can we enforce a vacancy tax for vacant commercial? Can we reduce land speculation by enforcing the Berkeley ordinance that states that if a developer does not apply for a building permit one year after receiving their use permit, that the use permit will be revoked? It says can be, and I want will be. And what changes have been made based on public comments so far? I hear the comments, but I don't see any changes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arnold Mamarella. I live along Solano Avenue, I'm a resident there, I'm not a single-family dwelling person. Also, I am an architect, urban planning consultant for several various cities, been involved in these type of products, upzoning, commercial corridors, downtowns. And I've reviewed probably 10,000 multifamily housing units, dozens of multifamily housing buildings, including when you used to be able to comment on them or the state changed law. Anyway, in a minute and a half I have left, it's only like a couple of major points. One is that I think, I just want to speak to Solano, that I think the model of housing we're looking at is really skewed. We're building all the same type of housing that serves a very narrow profile of the user. And we have to start looking at other ways of housing, like we talk about that middle housing. Well, these have opportunities to provide housing like that on top of buildings. So on commercial streets, we can mix retail and commercial on the lower level, or lower two levels, with housing on top of that, that is not simply a housing project that's four, five, six, seven stories tall with a little bit of retail on the bottom. Something that retains the sound of familiarity of these streets and gives a different types of housing units. One thing I would specifically hope is that, in addition to not having 100% housing as a model, it's a, are built step backs from the street also. They don't go more than a couple, two or three stories high, because where there is a step back. And then on the housing, rather than having corridor-style buildings above, we go to a model which is like, more of a courtyard housing, a cluster housing, where you come up to the podium and then you build housing around that, one or two story, you know, so two stories above, one story, there's all types of forms. I'd like to see these things explored. I'd like to see that the city hold off making any recommendation until more execution is done on what likely buildings can be built and what options and how they might look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd be delighted to be available, and who wants to talk? Who's staff, any consultant?
I'm going to have to bend over a little bit and maybe be clear in the microphone. Okay, so thank you for having us here tonight, Planning Commission. That's really heartfelt. You are well-meaning volunteer commissioners, and we know that. My wife and I both went to Cal and both have architecture and planning degrees. Developers can develop the 711 lot on College Avenue as it is, without upzoning. The communication about upzoning has been disingenuous. Diagrams show only the 50% state overlay. Once the 100% overlay is added, developers will be able to build seven stories on College Avenue. If recent current practices continue, SB 330 will be invoked in every building. Developers will then max out the height and width regardless of potential upzoning niceties like setbacks. With the upzoning, there's likely to be a seven-story apartment building on College and Russell. Note that seven stories is taller than most of what is on Shattuck Avenue, between Ashby and Dwight Lane currently. Just because past mistakes of building too short on Shattuck Avenue does not make it good urban design to punish College Avenue. There is talk of building in resource-rich areas with businesses that serve the local community. Two of the businesses that most serve locals are the 711 and the longer mat on Russell. Ironically, the most identified lot has been where the two businesses that serve the most locals. Zoning development standards proposed for College Avenue should mitigate the impact of buildings over four stories. They must have setbacks to adjacent properties. Ideally, alleyways which already exist behind the utilities, not on the street front. Ensure that the height steps down, even when SB 330s invoked. Have stepped-down heights. Avoid zero lot lines. I implore you to vote against any upzoning or zoning changes to the College Avenue Elmwood corridor. If you must vote for it, please add advisory comments to include development standards that mitigate the height. Thank you so much.
Hey, my name is Taylor Paselt, I'm a Berkeley native, Berkeley high grad, go Jackets! I think, first of all, thank you all for the service, and also, thank you very much for staff, for I think what was actually an excellent analysis, especially of the likelihood of individual lots being developed. I think that's actually one of the best studies I've seen. And I think it's very informative, right? We're not talking about every single thing being built. I mean, I forget the exact number, but, you know, it's a fairly small number of lots at the end of the day. I think for y'all on the commission, that does imply you need to think about that in terms of then what do we need to do with the remaining lots that may be developed, and what do we need to do to actually have housing? So, now, that's the first thought I have, is you take that into account. The second thing is, I know it's outside of the scope of the study, but I'd encourage you to make a recommendation to council to expand the scope of it to cover both a street redesign as well as the adjacent streets. Because simply having a corridor with unchanged streets, with nothing, you know, no transition on the side, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so I know that's not what they're asking for now, but I think that study should be expanded. Last thing I'd say is, I've been talking about housing for about 10 years now. In Berkeley, every single time, we've had very unrepresentative meetings with skewed demographics, and that doesn't mean that one demographic is invalid, but every time we have disproportionate representation in meetings like this, and then we have a significant disparity in terms of the generational views on housing. And I'm exactly at that great point, and I suspect you're going to see that tonight, that people older than me are more likely to be opposed, people younger than me are more likely to be in support, and I just encourage everybody to reflect on what they might represent.
Hello, my name is Warren, I live near Solano Avenue. A cou, a couple of things. One is that I'm disappointed that Solano Avenue, as well as North Shattuck, weren't considered for an intermediate upzoning. Shatt, Solano Avenue right now is zoned for two. The minimum that it's being considered for is four stories. And with, you know, density bonuses, they'll push it even higher. And I think we should send the consultants back and have them give us options for, for an intermediate one, to, to be able to, to consider that as well. The second thing is that the consultants very clearly said they don't know what's going to happen with the grocery stores. And unfortunately, those grocery stores are the anchor tenants of the neighborhood. They're what draws people into the neighborhood for, to do their basic shopping, and then they go and do other things while, while they're there. If those grocery stores disappear, even if it's for the, you know, for the duration of construction, for 33 years, then a lot of the surrounding businesses, even if they're on land that isn't being developed, is, are going to suffer significantly. The ci, the city has the ability to put in different zoning for different parcels. I strongly recommend that Andronicos, let Solano be excluded from the, from the zoning area. The city has the ability to draw that boundary however they want, and they can make exceptions for things that are critical to, to the community, and especially, you know, the walkability of, of the community, like, like the grocery stores. And longer mats. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Donald Simon. I'm an Elmwood resident, an Elmwood landlord, a Berkeley business owner, and a construction attorney of 30 years. And I will guarantee to you that whatever the developer can do as the maximum for height, they will absolutely do every time, because that's the way projects pencil out and profit is maximized. And if you think these legacy tenants are going to be able to live through that, they won't. There's nothing you can do to stop unless you invoke complete rent control over commercial properties, because the property owners will get, landlords will get offers they simply cannot refuse from developers, and those businesses will be lost. And we are finally starting to get the resident, the, the commercial properties filled again on the first floor in Elmwood, but we still got one that's been empty since I moved into the neighborhood six years ago. This is going to make a bad problem worse. And I understand the desire to increase housing. Berkeley's done more than probably any other city in the state to add housing, and I was an advocate for it, but people everywhere are getting frustrated because there's, there are giant buildings popping up everywhere. And you're approved so much, take a pause and see what difference it makes. As a landlord, being involved with other small landlords, I have two rental units in my backyard, and so does almost every other house on Benvenue and in the adjacent streets. We built our housing years and decades ago, these rental units, and because there hasn't been new rental units, does not mean there's not already a ton of diverse housing available. 56% was cited in the study as resident, as rental housing in Elmwood neighborhood. It was built many years ago. So comparing Elmwood, a two-lane street, to University, and downtown Shattuck, which are four-lane streets with much greater transit, is just completely erroneous and a false comparison. So much of the traffic on Elmwood is already backed up, that the drivers come down Benvenue and the other streets, and it's a death race trying to cross the street. We have a lot of elderly people that are just scared because there is so much traffic that already comes down, and this will make that exponentially worse. So take a pause. Don't try to make Berkeley San Francisco. We've already made a lot of changes. Let's see how that sinks in. Rents are dropping and absorption is slowing. So thank you for your time, and for your honesty.
Hi, my name is Jeff Broad, I'm an Elmwood resident, and I'd just like to say that on the face of it, five, six, seven stories on College Avenue in Elmwood just seems crazy to me. If it has to happen, I hope that the commission will employ all the setbacks that are part of the proposal, or could be part of the proposal. And then as far as retail goes, all we have to do is look at other areas like Bancroft, or Telegraph, or even Shattuck. Our independent local businesses will yield to Taco Bell and other national chains that can afford to be there. We're going to lose all those small local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, I appreciate your time and your consideration of this issue. I want to make a few comments here. First of which is that College Avenue shouldn't be part of this order plan. It's a congested neighborhood street, not arterial. Elmwood shopping is over a century old. It's comprised of 90 small independent shops and businesses along its two-block length. It's a two-lane road. College Avenue is only 60 feet wide, as previously discussed, that includes its narrow sidewalks. This proposal would build tall buildings for lot lines on both sides of the street. This would create a tunnel. Even with the step backs, it will block light and air. Fresh air especially, as traffic stays backed up for many blocks, as tonight, getting here, before the Ashby intersection. At two lanes, College Avenue will never be a transit corridor to allow mass transit or dedicated bus lanes. Tall buildings need to be built where transit corridors can be created. The proposed rezoning, in the proposed rezoning, the entire Elmwood historical shopping district is included, and it will include building heights over the entire area with the upzoning. Individual parcels are identified in the rede, as the redevelopment potential. High to low. Only a few parcels are noted as high development. The rest are shown as low, state of these lots. Actually, the developed, the proposed increase of allowed building heights will draw developers. They will aggregate multiple small parcels to make large building sites, balancing the shops. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, commissioners, I appreciate your service and you being part of this process. My name is Claudia Hunka. I've owned and operated Your Basic Bar in Elmwood for over 40 years. Elmwood is home to 90 independent businesses. I am speaking on behalf of the Elmwood Business Association. And my, many vital community services, our post office, Elmwood Laundry, Elmwood Coffee, Arlene's Cleaners, Wells Fargo, will be affected by this development negatively. One-third of the businesses have been a part of Elmwood for 20 to 40 years. Once demolished or displaced, they will not return. I want you to look at the faces of the Elmwood shopkeepers that I've provided you with, and realize that these are the potential businesses that will be destroyed. 99% of the Elmwood businesses rent and will be vulnerable to being removed. We've seen this in downtown Berkeley. Development can, will, and can and will recur to the scale within the neighborhood with the existing zoning. The Planning Department proposal, however, would transform our historic, 100-year-old Elmwood shopping district into five-and-story apartment blocks. We are opposed to both zoning alternatives proposed for the Elmwood corridor. In two weeks, our businesses and residents have collected over 400 signatures in opposition to both of these alternatives. Please reject both alternatives for the College Avenue corridor. Berkeley should be investing in local businesses and historic preservation, not clearing the way for large developers. If you change the zoning, developers will come. This is their way of investing and, and changing entire commercial district. We urge you to save the Elmwood, protect what Berkeley is important.
My name is Richard Tapp. I own a restaurant on College Avenue. I have a call, so excuse my voice. The presentations by the staff for the different meetings that we've, I've attended, not allowing town hall-type meetings like this, which is great, thank you for doing this, prevented public discussion. It, it did, I think having both, having the workshops were good because you could get more information. But prevent, you can see the positive atmosphere here, I think against the proposal, anyway, for the Elmwood that I'm speaking about. People clap, they applaud, we're civil, we've got timelines, we've got two minutes to say our piece. So that, that gives you a presence, it gives you a feeling of the community. Now, obviously, if you look around, we, we're, we're older, we probably don't have many, too many university students here, but that doesn't mean our voice is lessened by not being in a certain demographic, right? Now, the, the other thing is, some of the, some of the presenters have said, if this has to happen, it does not have to happen. It is not the foregone conclusion, although I think this side of the table thinks it is, with all the presentations and everything. There, there's very little positive talk or presentation about the existing conditions. It's always, let's add two more. The first option is two more stories, and then the second option is three or four more stories. What about keeping it similar to what it is? When a bus drives down, an AC transit bus drives down Elmwood, it's, it's quite ominous. It's a big, big, it's, it's a huge thing. You stand next to it, and we're talking about having a four- or five-story building. Now, that doesn't move, but still, you, especially if a Cal bus goes by, and, you know, anyway. Then, all right, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Leo Ballestri. I've lived and worked in Berkeley for the last two years. I came up here to join my partner, who grew up just down Hearst. I am extremely grateful to live in a city which values the climate, which... I am extremely grateful to live in a city which values the climate, which values resisting ICE, which welcomes refugees. I'm extremely grateful to live here, and I'm extremely grateful to have moved in just west of downtown. I believe I share a lot of your values. I protested alongside some of you. But there are places in Berkeley where I cannot live. If, when I was looking for other apartments, wondering if maybe there is space to have, a little more space for a family or something, there is nowhere near Solano where there is an apartment available right now, nor was there a month ago. The cheapest house anywhere near Solano is $1.4 million. I don't have $1.4 million. Housing which is market rate, a blend of market rate and affordable, is imperfect. Market rate is expensive, but market rate is at least possible sometimes. Enough roommates, and young people can have a chance to stay in the city. I invite you to, I understand the concerns about losing the character of a city. And one of the things that would worry me most is if all of the people who could move in next to me on my street were millionaires. I think that would kind of trash the character of the street. I'm very grateful for the neighbors I have. I am in favor of increasing the height of buildings permitted in various places around Berkeley to make it possible for the people who don't live there, who have been excluded, to join. It is easier to welcome refugees when there are places for them to live. It's easier to be sustainable when you can build dense housing near transit corridors, near things like grocery stores and pharmacies that allow people to walk and bike, and reduce their reliance on cars. To some of my questions, I'm in favor of trees along the sidewalks. I don't think there need to be necessarily setbacks at the high heights. And I realize that this is in opposition to many people here, but I'm very nervous about that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Glenn Wolkenfeld. I really appreciate what my predecessor said. I'm 63 years old. I'm a Berkeley homeowner, and I live two blocks north of Solano. I spent 27 years as a teacher at Berkeley High School. For anyone who opposes higher density in the Solano corridor, try this experiment. On a Friday or Saturday night at about 9:00 PM, go to the corner of Solano and Calusa. You could lie down in the middle of the street. Our community is dead. It's a citywide retirement home. It's dead because we've created a false oasis that only works for the privileged. But it doesn't work well. Like this young man who just spoke, my children cannot live in Berkeley, California. They've been priced out of it. They can't afford it. We need to open our community to maximum density so that our community can once again start to thrive. So I implore, I implore you to have the courage to make this a city where young people can live, not an old folks home. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for your work, for cultivating this space. My name's Leah Martins. I'm extremely fortunate to be a Berkeley homeowner in South Berkeley, and I name that, that I feel very lucky, but I recognize that that is, that is becoming increasingly more difficult as some of our folks have just said. I'm also the parent of three teenagers who've been going through Berkeley Unified Schools. I'm so grateful for that, but I don't know if my kids will be able to live here. It's not looking like it as they emerge from our house. And so I am in support of upzoning. I approve higher density in high resource areas. I think we need many more options. This, of course, is not the only effort, but it needs to be in the mix for housing to expand in Berkeley. So I encourage you all to maximize creative possibilities for more options for housing to be developed. And I just want to say, I think it's a false choice to frame the conversation as saying we can either have housing or we can have vibrant businesses. I don't think that's true. I think businesses need people in order to thrive. And so I encourage you to continue working to expand our density so we can revitalize our business districts by having more equitable ways for people to actually reside in Berkeley.
Good evening. My name is Carol Niaf, and I am a 43-year resident of the Elmwood neighborhood. I'm here to advocate for future Elmwood neighbors should these plans go through. As you all know, the Ashby College corridor is a major evacuation route for fire from the Berkeley Hills. And this is a really interesting dilemma or conundrum for me is how this commission has addressed disaster preparedness if you add units. How many human bodies are you adding to the Ashby College corridor? We work in Elmwood with our fire station, which is right there on Russell Street, and our staging area that used to be Longfellow School. And also, if the city of Berkeley is planning on building out the Ashby Bart Station into affordable housing or apartments, how will that dovetail with these high-density corridors or these opportunity zones? Because you've seen LA, you've seen Altadena. You've got all these people coming down Highway 13 from the Clermont to evacuate to the Bay. That is our evacuation route. So these are the questions that I'm asking myself. We are a certified neighborhood cert train. We have a cache that is one street in Elmwood. Our firemen have told us that we will be on our own for five days. So if you add an apartment building on the 7-Eleven lot or the post office lot, and you've got tons of people and cars, because I don't believe everyone's going to come with a bike, where and how are you going to support these future residents? Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stephen Albert, a resident of District 5, and I reside 300 feet from Solano Avenue.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm Dr. Stephen Albert. I reside on District 5, 300 feet from Solano Avenue. During a recent Solano stroll, my wife and I displayed this poster to educate Berkeley residents as to what this commission has proposed. We were told by an individual who's a teenager, who is not here, with short cropped hair and a short cropped beard. He spoke at the Solano Housing 4:00 to 6:00 PM meeting, so he's on staff. He tells us, this is a lie. You are misrepresenting what the Solano corridor is. And we said, look at page 19 of your own city presentation. Here is that panel. As someone said, the housing, and they will max out to 100%. So it's a pipe dream to say that only 50% is going to be presented. You are disingenuous with your presentation. Every single slide you showed, flip it over slightly, showed 50% density. You know that, as someone said, they will push that to the max, and there'll be no parking, of course, with density bonus. So thanks for the disingenuous presentation, trying to push this over, there's only going to be 50%, when that's very unlikely. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to make a comment in the spirit of suggestions rather than objections, and I'd like to credit the staff for the work that they've done, which I think is very good. But I think they were given the wrong goal. They were given a very small jigsaw piece and asked, how much housing can we cram into that space? That's the wrong question. The question should be, how much housing do we need to add? And is there a distributed way of doing that that honors the character of the neighborhood, maintains the height of buildings at a reasonable level, somewhat above, but not in great excess beyond the surrounding neighborhoods? And makes use of the fact that, for example, if you want eight stories along one street, if you distribute that over a few streets, you can do that with two-story buildings. I also would like to echo the comment that multi-generational communities and a variety of housing types are essential, both rental and ownership. Regarding the businesses, I think it would be prudent to require local ownership of commercial tenants in the ground floors of any new buildings. Regarding parking, I agree that some parking is necessary. I think that parking should go underground so that we're not using bulk in the skyline for parking. And the parking space that was on the surface can become parks because we're short on green space, particularly with the increased density. We should include secure bike parking as a requirement for all new buildings. And we should be doing outreach to renters in other parts of the city who might be able to move into these units, to ask them what they want in those units. Finally, I'd suggest that rather than only looking at these areas, we should look at the underprivileged areas of the city and figure out how to bring the amenities to those neighborhoods rather than everywhere.
Hi, my name is Kamal. I'm a resident of the Solano neighborhood. I want to thank the commissioners for all their work and the staff for probably what's been used in the making. These aren't easy questions to resolve. It strikes me that the housing question is a classic wicked problem where a change to one element of a problem inevitably affects another aspect of the problem, and a third, and a fourth, and a fifth aspect. And so it's very difficult to intervene in a complex system and to have an easy answer. And so both the proposal for middle housing that was recently approved by the city and the current proposal strike me as an ill-fated, unfortunately, attempt to resolve a wicked problem without consulting adequately all of the stakeholders involved and to foresee the downstream effects of other things that can be affected by an attempt to increase housing. That being said, I want to say that I was a student in this city. I understand what it's like to be a renter. I understand what it's like to be priced out of housing. I want to see more low-income housing built specifically. Market rate housing will not solve the housing crisis. I'm really upset and disturbed by the way that these proposals have divided our community into old versus young, into having family-owned and local businesses versus having housing. And if we are going to work with developers, why is the city only asking for 20% in market-level housing? That's not affordable housing. If you're going to work with developers, require 60% be low-income housing. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having all of us and listening. My name is William Torchion. I live in the Elmwood neighborhood. I'm a new resident here, so I'm going to sort of tread carefully in terms of the local dynamics. We just moved here at the beginning of the year from Paris, France. But one of the reasons we moved to where we did, other than our children being nearby, is because it's a walkable neighborhood. And because College Avenue, you can walk to College Avenue and mail letters, go to the movies, buy food, go to bookstores. It's really unique in terms of both the architectural heritage and the overall vibrancy of a sort of small-town-feeling community. And I also have real concerns. I've been through this process in other cities and locations over the years, and I found the presentation really skewed and somewhat misleading. I mean, I recognize it was all done with a lot of hard work, but this is going to fundamentally transform College Avenue. You're going to have big box buildings. You're going to completely ruin the character of the street. It's not a corridor if you ever tried to drive down it between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. It's not much of a corridor for anything. And you're going to lose it. And once you lose that, once you lose the integrity of a neighborhood like that in terms of the commercial setting, you don't get it back. And I've seen lots of other neighborhoods in Berkeley where, again, as a newcomer, it looks like that's happened, where the fabric of the inherent architectural togetherness has been lost. And once you lose it, you don't get it back. You know, I grew up in a college town in Evansville, Illinois. I've lived in Cambridge, Mass., and in New Haven, and the West Village in New York. You know, you've got to really be careful about these neighborhoods. They're vibrant things, and you start pulling at the fabric of them, even with these plans. And I agree, they're misleading. You're going to see the maximum heights on these. And they're going to be shellacking modern buildings, and you're going to lose something that is precious to this town. Thank you.
I want to thank the commission for this opportunity and the consultants, both of you, both things for your service. My name is Nancy Fashion, and I've lived off of Solano for over 30 years, and I raise mention earlier. It has been a luxury and a privilege, and I'm very grateful. I want what I have and have had to be accessible and available for others. And that is something that will only take place if we invest now and happens over the long term. Yes, this is a tough nut to crack. Yes, there are legitimate design issues and legitimate concerns that have been raised here this evening. I know there will not be a perfect solution, but there needs to be a solution, and I commend you for trying. On Solano, over this period of time, Solano has become stale. It has lost foot traffic. There's been virtually no building with the exception of one corner building that I think was built more than 10 years ago against a lot of opposition. Businesses need the foot traffic that housing will provide. Yes, we need to address the traffic and the design concerns. California overall has failed its young people and non-wealthy citizens. They are priced out. Many of us will not be here 10 or 20 years from now. I don't know where I will be. I want others to have had the privilege. A thousand units projected across three corridors seems a modest way to increase that possibility. Thank you again.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Celeste Marks. In 2011, we bought our single-family home, second family house on Tulare Avenue, the oldest house in Thousand Oaks, dating from 1912. Choir chief David Sprague told Bud Shankin recently that Berkeley is already the second-density city in California, second only to San Francisco. Two pedestrians were run down by drivers in the street right next to Solano, Marin Avenue, and died in a single calendar year. It is insane to consider upzoning Solano or College either. And this week, a driver ran onto the sidewalk. Pedestrian was hostile on his very feet. Only Chattock Avenue, which is a bit wider, is remotely suitable for this upzoning, in my opinion. But even for Chattock, I would agree with the loss of character there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Edmar. I wanted to address something that came from staff and has been mentioned by a younger speaker here about the demographics. Don't pay attention, the demographics are skewed to old people. These corridors are all in places where old people live. That's why they show up. That's why they care. And to discount them because they're the ones that come is not really appropriate, any more than it would be appropriate for those of us who are seniors to be telling the university what it needs to be doing in its surrounds for students. The question here is not whether or not we're providing housing for younger people coming up. You, sir, I was very moved by what you said. I understand that. I was young once too and wanted to buy a house. It took me a long time before I was able to do it. But taking an area that is exactly what we're trying to achieve in the city, which is an area with a lot of housing and walkable stores and shops that can serve your everyday needs, and tearing that down to put up a lot more housing that isn't going to be big enough for you and your kids. There are going to be small apartments, maybe two beds, maybe there'll be a few that are a little larger, but that's not what any of the middle housing stuff said was going to be built. With the middle housing proposal that's already gone in and with SB 79, there is no end of housing that is going to be able to be built in Berkeley. We are not, if it gets built, we're not going to not have enough housing. And I question why we want to put these very precious areas that are not corridors, they're neighborhoods. Why you want to put them at risk? That's my problem.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Clark, and I work in housing development for nonprofit Forklift Housing. Also been on planning, commission, and zoning board. And I think that, as we all agree, I think that we want to keep these commercial corridors vibrant, and we want to keep the existing businesses whole. And I think one of the things I didn't see in the analysis was what was the consultation with economic development? And, you know, how we worked with them in terms of the character of the of these commercial corridors and how this is going to affect them. I think the objective design standards is critical. We need to preserve those elements that create pedestrian retail character and commercial liability. So the setbacks and step backs, but also the rhythm of the blazing, the uses on the street front. Where are the trash and utilities? We do not, we want them on the side alley, I agree. We don't want parking. The height of the ceiling for those commercial spaces, all these things have to be included in a commercial corridor rezoning. If you don't have those, you're going to get substandard spaces in the retail, because those aren't the ones that are going to make the money, right? So we have to incentivize that. The other thing that I really object to in our code in general is there's no enforcement of the retail space requirement. As I found out, and Jordan knows because I complained to him, in the Adeline corridor, we have a lot of places that are just vacant and boarded up, and there's no enforcement by the city to say, hey, you have to use this as a retail space. We have no way to enforce that. Whole other issue, but I would like us to think about that as we're doing more of this commercial rezoning. On Elmwood, I have to agree. It's not really viable to make that much bigger. And the middle housing needs to supply the housing for Elmwood that we're going to have on that corridor. But Solano and Shattuck, I think we need to do something, you know, more density.
Hello. My name is Tucker Olson. I'm a Berkeley graduate student. Thank you for the ability for me to have the opportunity to speak. As you may guess, I'm here to speak in support of upzoning. I frankly think that there is still an enormous need for more housing in Berkeley, and I'm confused why that would even be a point of argument, to allow for a more prosperous and diverse future for the city. If housing construction slows, the Berkeley of 2050 will only be for wealthy, existing residents and transient students confined to tiny apartments crammed against campus with essentially no young families and no middle class. However, I also hear the concerns of many residents, architects, former urban planners, business owners, and so on. As such, I would like to state my support for slight modifications that can protect local businesses, although we've heard some concerns to that effect. I think this feedback should be incorporated and advise rezoning, planning now and in the future. But this does not reduce the pressing need for more housing in this city so that young people can actually live here long-term, have families, and the city has a bright future. To whatever extent modifications to this measure are made to address some of the concerns of the community, I hope they do not reduce the number of potential units and that a more thorough plan for upcoming rezoning beyond the missing middle can be made outside of these specific limited commercial corridors. Thank you.
Hello. Catherine Vargo. I live on the Solano corridor near Solano, Cali. I just want to, I'm sort of late into this, but I want to address that I am very, very supportive of more housing in Berkeley and happy, and so I, you know, commend everybody. But I am also dismayed if we are to take a lesson of what has happened on Shattuck and all the big buildings that have been built in downtown Berkeley, and I'm dismayed at the state of it. I don't know how many have been affordable. I don't know how many are filled. I don't know how many of those units actually could hold families so people like you would and young families can move in. So I was very, very for changing single-family zones. I would not mind. I live on Catalina. If someone wants to build a really nice floor flat next to my house, I would not object to that. I think that can be done in terms of different architectural alternatives, you know, for building housing, but housing that families can live in. And I also hear about the buildings in Berkeley, all those apartments, many of them empty, are also unaffordable for people, for young people. I'm hearing very high rents. And I mean, I don't know that for sure, and I would like to have a list of buildings in downtown Berkeley and what those rents are. And I would also like to know who built those buildings and what profit they took from the buildings and where they took their profits.
Yes.
To equilibrate more housing to more affordable housing and opportunities for, I just really feel like I want a multi-generational community, and how are we going to achieve that? And I don't know if this sort of more tall buildings do that.
A couple of things. With this plan, what we haven't done is we haven't thought about open space to go along with it and parks. So I would really like to see that when we are adding more people and bigger buildings and we know that what council is going to pass is the tallest buildings, and they may even go above that, but we really should be planning for how we're going to fit in more parks and open space into the plan. So that is required, and it's not an afterthought, because once we build, once the buildings are approved, then you're not going to go back and say, oh, you know, we should have put a little park in here in the middle for all these people so they have some place to go outside and sit and enjoy. Maybe they could still enjoy nature if we haven't destroyed it all. The other thing is that we always think that having very dense buildings is going to activate our streets. And when I first started looking at housing and adding taller buildings, what I noticed is that the streets by the big tall buildings didn't really have people. And when I went to the other side of the city, like you can do this in San Francisco, you find that the people are out enjoying themselves where we have the lower-level buildings, the one, two, and three-story buildings, and parks. I mean, if you're in big cities for any length of time, which I have been, it's really not the tall buildings and that density that gives you a vibrant street. It's having a variation and having smaller buildings. And so I would also ask that you consider high and low buildings so that you don't have a complete wall.
Hi. I live in Terry Kaplan's district, and I got a letter from him asking that we write to city council and support his facilities extra tax that he wants to, it's not a bond, but it's another tax, like we do B-SUP. And of course, I want to support the buildings and the parks because I use them all the time. However, he also said that we will really need these because we're going to add third more to our population. And so I think we're maxing out on density because I'm, it's very much in my mind about the heights and also evacuation, because my friends in the hills say sometimes they get evacuation notices, depending on the weather. And the thing about the weather now is by the time that a fire is approaching the hills, it's approaching at such a speed that we are all in the same ballpark. We have to evacuate also. The whole city would have to evacuate because the winds will be much, much higher. And this is not a 100-year event that we're thinking about. This will be a more common event. And there is no plan. And I thought, well, I thought, bike, I've got a raft, I'll just take my dog, my husband, and we'll go down to the marina and live down there. Well, you can't bike. Did you know that? You can't bike. Cinders will fall on you. You'll burn. You're only safe in a car. And the people that are in apartments will have cars. And I'm right on San Pablo, and there's a lot of big, huge apartment buildings. And really, I don't know what we're doing. And I don't think the city knows what we're doing. That's one safety thing. The other is I met my neighbors because my neighbor was doing housework, and so everyone in the neighborhood would visit with him. And that's how I got to know all my neighbors, and it's one-story. We're all one-story. So that's one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Art Goldberg. I live at 1814 Cedar Street. I'm here to talk about North Shattuck. When I moved to Berkeley in 1968, everyone said there's a housing shortage, blah, 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 blah. We found a small apartment on MLK for $90 a month, a one-bedroom. That was the state of housing then, even in, it was a tight housing market. I lived in that neighborhood for a long time. I lived there most of my time in Berkeley. In, I think, 2005, someone proposed a North Shattuck Plaza, and the neighborhood immediately understood what it meant. It meant tearing down all these shops on Shattuck between Vine and Rose and replacing it with condos, four, five, six-story condos. We were furious, and we organized, and we held meetings, and we shouted down people at meetings like this, and the planning department decided it was too controversial to go ahead with that program. Well, I can tell you this, the fight is still there in North Shattuck. We will not stand for you putting up eight, nine-story buildings in our neighborhood. We will fight you with lawsuits. We will fight you with civil disobedience. But don't think you're going to get away with this. We understand that this is driven by the real estate industry and by the construction industry. There is a housing shortage in Berkeley for young people, but it's because the University of California, after it agreed to limit its enrollment to 32,000, now has 46,000 to 50,000 students. That has created a housing shortage. It will only be alleviated by the university building student housing. But I want to leave no, I just want to make it very clear, we will fight this by any means necessary.
Hi. Hi. So does anybody know what these are? I'll give you the answer. These are small potatoes, which is kind of like this proposal. And I think we can do a lot better. High limits of three stories, only parcels directly abutting the corridors. Not only should we do better, we should go taller and upzone the adjacent blocks because we're in a housing crisis. And while we shouldn't be focusing on demographics, perhaps we could ask each speaker the last time they paid a rent check. For me, it was September 1st. I am really glad that in the city, we can for the most part agree that there is a housing crisis, that we want to create affordable homes for diverse households, that we want to fight our legacy of racialized zoning, and we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But I'm sick of people saying, I want it, I care about desegregation, just not enough that I'm not willing to look at the eight-story building. I'm sick of people saying we should build more affordable housing, but I don't want housing to use the density bonus, because the density bonus only applies to projects with enough affordable units. At the end of the day, we need to build housing everywhere, and so let's build as much housing as we can here and throughout the rest of the city. More housing will bring vibrancy to these neighborhoods, which are a little bit suffering, a little bit quiet. More housing will add diversity and support local businesses. Businesses, as was mentioned before, need people to survive. They need foot traffic. So building more housing is actually what's going to save the Elmwood. The new housing will be lovely, and I can't wait to walk, and I can't wait to walk these neighborhoods when the housing is finally built. Thank you.
Hello. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal, in particular, the more expansive options. I have to second the previous speaker's argument that there is a certain lack of ambition in this proposal, no disrespect to the work that has been done, but I would hope to see more ambitious proposals in the future. Something I haven't heard much about, and I missed the presentation, is the idea of affirmatively furthering fair housing. That's where this plan comes from. That's what we, that's why we promised the state that we would do this. That's why the state said, okay, you do this and you are meeting your obligations. Elmwood is a wonderful place. I'd love to be there. Why is it so quaint and so pleasant when some other places in our community aren't always so quaint? The answer is that they were built that way. Elmwood and these other places were built solely and explicitly to keep some people out. This is well-understood. And it doesn't matter what is in our hearts. I'm sure that there is not a bigoted bone in the many bodies in this room, and it doesn't matter. It's not reasonable, it's not fair, it's not equitable, and it certainly is not progressive that some neighborhoods bear the burden of housing development while others are exempt. Can't build in the hills because of fire risk. Can't build on these corridors because they're quaint. Can't build tall in the neighborhoods because we want to respect the character of low-density communities. So what's left? South Berkeley, West Berkeley, San Pablo Avenue, University Avenue, this is not acceptable anymore. It's not acceptable. It's certainly not environmental justice to concentrate development on the major thorough fairs. Every one of these buildings is going to have at least 15 or 20% below-market rate housing. We know that bringing a person from a low-resource neighborhood into a high-resource neighborhood makes an enormous difference in our lives, so let's get this for as many people as we can. Thank you.
Hi. I've lived in Berkeley since 1972. I still rent in happily. Can you all hear me? Okay, good. So I'm also wanting to speak in regard to the North Shattuck area, which is where I live. What I find is that density is not necessarily an enhancement to a city. What I've seen over the years is that Berkeley's become less livable thanks to more density. It is much more dangerous to drive or walk on the streets, significantly more difficult, Berkeley cannot solve the housing issue in California alone. We're acting like, you know, it's our responsibility to, you know, house every possible person. No, the number of people who want to live here will always be more than there's housing for, even if we built on every parcel that exists here. Heaven forbid. Regarding Solano Avenue being dead, I think that neighborhood is peaceful rather than dead. Personally, I have a lot of balance in my thinking between, yes, housing in itself is good within reasonable limits, and livability. But the livability of the city will decrease with the increase in density. I mean, I find myself looking at, you know, abandoned used car lots and going, oh, you could build a really nice four-story building that houses a lot of people.
Hi, Eric. My name is Nancy Rader. I spent a number of hours with these people here trying to educate myself, incredibly complicated issues, and I struggle with them. I understand that we have to densify because we're fighting sprawl, we're fighting the carbon of the traffic that has to get to their jobs. I understand the need to meet our housing goals. My question, though, which I just don't know if it's been thought about, is do we really need high-rises everywhere to meet those goals? I think a lot of people use these neighborhoods that don't live in them, and I think they enjoy them, no matter where in Berkeley they live. I go to West Berkeley Bowl, I go to Elmwood, I go to Swallow. I don't live in any of those places, but they're nice places to go. And I think we need to think about preserving those places. We can already build up under existing zoning. We could do that thoughtfully. But maybe, you know, what is wrong with building up downtown with the high-rises that are already going up while preserving our nice neighborhoods so those people downtown, you know, can go to campus, which is where most of them will want to go, but still enjoy the neighborhoods that they enjoy? I just, I don't know if that has been thought of or if it's possible. But what I'm missing, I guess, is the big picture of why we have to put kind of sore thumb high-rises here, there, and everywhere that are just going to, I'm sorry, that destroy the character of Berkeley, which is what we all love.
Good evening, commission members. I'm Steve and I'm speaking as an individual. I want to talk to you about something tonight, which is my experience in actually reviewing and voting on and approving the sorts of buildings you're discussing. It's from sitting on the design review committee for a number of years. And what is missing in this calculation... And what is missing in this calculation is that developers are not building mid-rise and high-rise buildings with retail, ground-floor retail in mind. They are building residential spaces, and the ground-floor retail is incidental and as small as they can make it. And I've had many arguments with developers about getting more retail into their buildings. North Shattuck, one of the buildings that was in the presentation, has just gone through approval. The ground floor of that building has seventy-six parking spaces. That's the primary use on the ground floor of that building. It has one corner, third, three-hundred-square-foot tiny little commercial space. If that's what we get built in the actual buildings, not the planner idea buildings, but the actual buildings that developers are willing to build, then the neighborhood retail disappears. And you'll have just a row of housing, and you won't have vibrant commercial districts, which actually exist in these three places already. So I think, my guess is that you would have less than fifty percent of the ground floor of these buildings be retail, and you'll have a lot of retail businesses that won't be able to use that space. And we could go through the plans for the last twenty-five or thirty buildings that have actually been approved, and I can show you that in all the plans. So please keep that in mind when you're told this will be great. Retail will just change out the retail and have housing above it. That's not actually what people are building and what they're willing to build. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Martins, and I'm here to speak in favor of building as much housing and especially affordable housing as we can. And I specifically want to talk about the character of the neighborhood. Like, you hear that a lot. And like, we just don't live in the 1950s anymore. And my kids don't have a place, like, to move here. There's no future for them here, because there's nowhere where they can live. Cities must change. It can't remain stagnant and still forever. So we have to be willing to make some changes to our community. And I think those changes could be beautiful. They could be good. Personally, I think a lot of the objective design standard rules are very strict and create these blocky, ugly buildings. I wish that we didn't build buildings like that. I wish that we could have more Julia Morgans and more creative artists of the next generation to come in and build beautiful aesthetic housing and commercial buildings for everyone. That's what I would love to see. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Talbot. I'm a homeowner in D1. I also have kids growing up in Berkeley, and I would like them to be able to stay in the community if they want to. And that's just not a realistic option for most folks raising kids in Berkeley today. I also love these corridors. They're great places to be, as everyone has said. I do think that, as we recognize, we talk about preserving these corridors in communities. I think if we just let them be where they are, that's not purpose preservation. That's allowing decay. We see how retail is under threat in a bunch of different ways today in Berkeley and the rest of the U.S. and society. And without getting a lot more people into those areas with a lot more foot traffic, I think we're going to see a lot of that decay happen much more quicker than we expect. So I think that without us, you know, doing what we need to do to support those communities, support these corridors with more housing, with more people, with more density, we're going to lose them. And so I definitely urge, I agree, you know, it's great to be more ambitious, but it's great work that the team's done already. And I'm really excited to see kind of how this helps. So support this, and thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to make a couple of points. And one is actually interesting. For the last twenty years, you know, I grew up in the Bay Area and did your own time. For the last twenty years, I've been going to these different meetings and hearing about, it's a supply and demand. Hey, college economics, supply and demand. The problem is, we've been hearing this for twenty years, they built a whole bunch of stuff, and a bunch of it is still vacant. Unless before lease sites or maybe just decoration. And then they're bringing up the redlining stuff. It's pretty disingenuous. The same industry that created redlining in the mid-twentieth century is now trying to bring it up like, oh, we have to keep building these Darth Vader castle-looking places. They all look like modern prison chic. This is a disingenuous, it's money laundering on a global scale. And the United Nations Secretary of Housing talked about this six, seven years ago. They put a video out that this is a global phenomenon. I've got relatives in Canada that are going through this. Corporations buy up property, and they write it off. Nobody's checking to see if they're spending what they say they're spending on maintenance or anything. This is money laundering. Until we have filled up these places, and here's another thing. The rent was going to go down. We build more places, the rent's going to go down. It has not gone down. I have paid a lot of money. I still owe two K for that, and that's not including PGN.
I'm Julie Altway, and I've been in Elmwood since 1980. And I feel that the two blocks of College Avenue between Webster and Russell are the heart and soul of that neighborhood. The property is valuable. People pay a lot of money for it. They also pay a lot of money in taxes. They also do a lot for the schools. They volunteer. They support their schools, and they support all the other community services that are going on in that particular area. So I'm only speaking about the one that I know, which is Elmwood. But there was a young man who spoke, his name's Alex, and he said, "Look at other possible corridors. Examine other areas. Do more research. Don't just pick the first three places that stick out because they're, you know, popular. Look at other areas that could be developed, and you can bring your transit into those areas. You can have the jobs connected. You should have, like, job training. You should have job opportunities for people if you're going to be housing them in these houses." And I would also like you to consider doing some research for these big buildings that have been built in downtown Berkeley. How many are really, what's the vacancy rate? What's the rents that the people are paying? And are these people, the developers who've done this, just parking their money there so that they can, you know, have a tax write-off? I think that's something that should be examined, because that's exactly where you're going with what you're proposing. So I hope that you will think about not taking a step off the cliff, but back off. Rethink all the really good information and ideas that you've gotten tonight from all these people. And some of you just look at it like, "Oh, hurry up and finish talking. We don't really want to hear what you have to say." But please, think about it. And go on College Avenue at four o'clock in the afternoon and see what you think. And see all the people evacuating from the university who go up Ashby to get out of town.
Hello. My name's Maya. I'm a UC Berkeley student, and I just have two quick comments. One was just accessibility. The people in the back, they couldn't see the presentation. And I feel like Planning 101 is just making sure that what you're presenting is accessible, the content. Also, as a student, I could not live, I could not afford, I'm a PhD student. I could not afford to live in Berkeley. None of those units are affordable. I have a friend who's paying three grand a month for a one-bedroom. And so I'm not sure that this is the solution. Maybe we just have to go back to the drawing board.
Hi, I'm Amy Clyde.
Before you start her topic, I'd like to know, if anybody else is planning to speak, could they please line up here? Because I'm trying to manage the meeting, and it's easier if I kind of know how much more time we're going to have in public comment. So if anybody else would like to speak, please, please come in, sort of queue behind. Amy. Amy, thank you. And make sure you start her over again. Go for it.
Thank you very much for this great forum. It's been great to hear what everybody has to say. And I just think it's a great community where we can have a clear and frank exchange of ideas. And I feel that a lot of people here on both sides, or on multiple sides, are uncomfortable with rushing. And that we have, and I think the fact is, we have time as a community to come up with plans and proposals that are, that address everybody's concerns and fears and needs. And I think, you know, the one thing that has really become very, very clear to me is that developers who want to develop in Berkeley need to have guardrails set around them. And there need to be requirements, and the city needs to enforce those requirements. And those requirements need to reflect the values and the needs of the community for good livability and also, you know, as much housing as we can possibly get.
Okay. I don't see anybody else queued up to speak. So this isn't a hearing, so we don't have to close public comment with a vote to close it from the commissioners. So I, first of all, want to thank everybody for really coming to the meeting and speaking and explaining what you've been thinking about this topic and suggesting ideas. There were a number of suggestions. I don't usually take notes, but I took quite a few notes tonight. And I do, just as the person trying to move things along, I really do appreciate that at this meeting, everybody kind of stood in line and kept it going. Because, look, it's only ten after eight instead of midnight. So I really appreciate that. And I also would like to say that, once we have our discussion, you know, we also, like everybody in the community, we have our perspective. We have our professional work. We have the work we've done in the community. And I really would like to assure everybody that in our conversations, we actually listen to everything that we hear. And I believe the staff does, too. And I really would like to acknowledge the hard work that the staff does, sometimes in a very contentious way with people that feel that they, that the staff is not responding to their particular interests, not only about this, but about other topics. So it's a tough job, and I would like to acknowledge that every staff person I have ever worked with in the city of Berkeley works really hard. Maybe the boss, maybe the boss at some people doesn't think so. But in my experience, everybody's working really hard. So what I think I would like to do, because this is a pretty big topic, is to start and have each of the commissioners just sort of generally speak about their suggestions or their thoughts about the big picture. Because there's a lot of detail in the questions that we've had, or there's quite a lot of them. So I thought the best thing to do might be just to start with an overview of what you're thinking and where you think we might focus our attention. And that would be something short, and then we'll go back and do it again on some of the details. Because I'm just trying to get a sense of where we might want to go. Does everybody, and I'm kind of curious, does anybody else like to weigh in on how we could manage this discussion? Would you have a...
I thought maybe just going through the four topics, and then we could all just go around for each one?
I kind of don't want to do that, because I think that they're too disparate.
Okay.
You know, and then everybody will be talking about something different. I kind of want to start with the overview. That was my, that's how I was thinking about doing it.
Okay.
And I'm going to start down here, because I want to give Angela a chance to kind of hear how we do it, so she isn't on the hot seat at the first meeting. So, Ms. Your...
Oh, goodness. I'm not going to put you on. I usually get to say, "I agree. Great points, everybody." But, so, appreciate all the public comment. It's a huge chunk of your day and time and investment to come out on a weeknight and have the time, perhaps the luxury of time, to be able to engage in civic discourse like this. So thank you for your comments. And there were, I agree, a lot of good ones. I have just a quick comment. As far as the, you know, range of, you know, densities that are being considered by the community, by staff in this process, I was listening to hear, and I'm still not sure I hear any benefit to walking by a tall building as opposed to a shorter building. I do not, I totally understand the benefit to the people who are able to live in a high-resource zone that were previously excluded from being able to be housed in a high-resource zone. That is an enormous benefit, and arguably, a community benefit that they are no longer generating greenhouse gases commuting to and from this high-resource, high-opportunity town we love. That is, that is an enormous benefit, and an enormous benefit to our earth and our future generations. And also, in terms of the disaster preparedness that was mentioned, wildfire zones are in the hills, in exurbs, in greenfields, in areas where people are trying desperately to move out of and into areas that are more sustainable and walkable to live in. So I just want to make sure I addressed my points there. So that's pretty much all I'll say about the specifics around height and housing. I do want to focus on businesses, though, because businesses are really the, kind of, they are the social, cultural lifeblood of these corridors. And a lot of people spoke to how much they love those businesses. This is my day job. I am a nonprofit business improvement district director. So I am extremely aware of the disruption that can be created and how desperate businesses are for people. People are what, people are why businesses exist. So we need, they must have foot traffic. They must have people patronizing their shops. And I agree with some of the great ideas that were mentioned, like, you know, we should be thinking about generous sidewalks and infrastructure and good transit and expediting permits for sidewalk seating and even incentivizing businesses or property owners to get those uses in their ground floors, like grocery stores. And yeah, subsidize certain businesses that we want to stay here and be stable through, you know, some amount of disruption. I was really interested to learn about the scale of disruption that even could be possible. I was almost disappointed to hear how few parcels are even eligible for housing and more neighbors in our, in our communities. So I hope we can even revisit that and make more housing units and more housing parcels of potential sites for more neighbors in these high-resource corridors. And I also just want to flag, a couple of folks mentioned, you know, they're speaking on behalf of organizations. I, for one, am a member of the Bateman Neighbors Association. Someone said they were speaking on behalf of the Berkeley Neighborhood Association, of which Bateman Neighbors put his part. We have not made any kind of position statement on this. We are definitely engaged, but there has been no position statement made. Also, I live close to these shops, and I know many of these store owners. Some of them have signs in the window that say "Dome Up Zone" in some of the collateral that has been shared here tonight. I have gone in to have, when I see a sign like that, I have gone in to have conversations with the merchants. Often, they don't know what the policy, what is even being talked about. They have misinformation sometimes. I was really, I just wanted to have the conversation with them and hear their position on why they had that sign in their window. So I think I would just caution folks when they're speaking on behalf of organizations, make sure we actually have those honest conversations with people that we say we're representing. And these people are too busy to be here tonight. They are busy running struggling businesses that don't have enough foot traffic in these beautiful, high-resource corridors. I will pass the mic.
Commissioner, cool. A general, sense of general, before we move into some specifics.
Sure. So as far as what I see for the big picture, I think ideally where we want to get to is where Telegraph Avenue already has. They took, they went down this road earlier. In fact, these three streets we're talking about today are the last streets in the city that were, that are going through this process. But Telegraph, what we've seen is that the new buildings come one at a time. It's not a whole block getting redeveloped at once. It's maybe one or two buildings at a time. They open up. Businesses move in. Maybe another construction project starts on different lots following you. But I do think that it is one thing we should get really into detail of is what happens on the first floor. Making sure that we do get storefronts, that we do not walk down a street of garage doors. So I would say focus on the first-floor design.
You took my key point.
So, yeah, I will try to keep this short. You know, the, these neighborhoods are sort of, we talk about the transit and utilities as the infrastructure... as the infrastructure that is so important in these neighborhoods. To me, the infrastructure is the integrity of this ground floor fabric that's vital and interesting and fun to walk down. That's, that is really the infrastructure that I think is so precious, and I really appreciated hearing the comments around that. I really heard that. I'm an urban designer as my day job, and I work in a lot of places. I focus all the time on the ground floor. The ground floor is what, where my eyes are. And I think it's where actually most people's sort of perception of the environment focuses. And this is maybe going to be unpopular, but I, I think the height question is kind of a distraction. It's not, it's not actually affecting that much. I'm not sure if that's what you were getting at, Commissioner Hauser, but I, I think it's so important that we get the ground floor of this right. And, you know, just to kind of share some pictures of ground floors, I'm sure you all know and love. What we like about these is, I think, a few things that are easy to, they're actually kind of easy to quantify and understand. It's about a rhythm, it's about, you know, 12 to 24 foot bays, it's about transparency, it's about interesting things that make the walk worthwhile. And so I really think that if we, if we don't get that right, we sort of blow this whole thing. That said, I'm running a talk on Monday at Climate Week in New York, if any of you are there, you should come, about how the, the single best thing we can do in dense areas is build more housing. It's the, it's, it is twice as effective as the next thing, which is electrification and e-bumps. So this is, this is our job, is actually to build housing. And I think we can do it. I guess the overall comment is we need to figure out a way to sort of maximize the opportunities we have. And we're doing it to create neighborhoods that are great to live in. These are great neighborhoods to walk. Solana could be better. That's my, this is my corridor, I go up there. It's a little sleepy. But we need to make these neighborhoods really also do something that they're not doing yet, which is really be sort of neighborhood corridor streets that serve the residents to, or, you know, serve, serve folks that live on the third or fourth floor or whatever. I think we're, we're not trying to just keep, someone said we can't just sort of like keep what we have. We actually need to change what we have in order for it to be even better. I think if we try and hold on to what we have, we're going to lose it. Retail's in trouble. But I'm really convinced by what I heard tonight about sort of how important it is that we think of the small businesses that we want to move in after a change is made. I think that's, that's something that I'm thinking more about. And I have kind of a more specific comment, but I'll move it on.
Commissioner Wong.
Okay, well, I'll start off by saying it's an honor to be here tonight. It's my first meeting, as many of you know, on the planning commission. And I'll just speak as a student and someone with less experience than a lot of my fellow commissioners here. But I did have a lot of questions come up while I was hearing the public comments that, I'll probably just go over briefly right now, and then dive into them deeper later on. But something that I was hearing a lot was this concern about the 100% density bonus. And I think that is a question that I also do have. I think something that we need to make sure happens is that the housing that we're building is affordable. And to make sure that, one, one I guess is that the housing that is being built is affordable. And that comes up the question, like, I'm wondering how the 15% very low income plus 15% moderate income addition was, like, how they, how they decided on those percentages to lead to the 100% density bonus? And then two, making sure that what we're building is being used. So that brings up the point of vacancies and what I've heard the other commissioners mentioning about the ground floor and protecting retail. I think that is something that I generally do agree with. And again, questions that I'll bring up later, but for now, I'll pass it on to Darryl.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
You can call him Darryl.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Okay. The whole concept, I don't know, I'm such a, you know, obviously everyone knows I love building housing. You know, college freaks me out a little bit though. I think the premise of the rezonings only being these commercial zones that were made back when the key system ran, and they're all like station area, very small areas. I, I don't like the scope. I guess we have to do it because council said that was kind of the directive from the housing elements, so I guess there's no changing that. But like Mason McDuffie had a streetcar there, and now that's what we have to do. I don't really get that. But nevertheless, I think, as people said, the retail stuff is really important, and what I would like to do is really look at how downtown has panned out, the good and the bad. And look, I think that downtown has done a lot of good stuff. I'm sorry to say, like, I very much, as someone whose family used to go to downtown all the time, and you could park right on Chata, because there wasn't that many people there in the evening time, seeing the, the old car shops replaced with housing and ground floor retail. My girlfriend and I go to Rose Pizzeria. You walk up and down university from the highly trafficked Trader Joe's, very glad it's not Big Tires anymore, all the way up to Oxford, there's just so much vibrancy. I see all the kids running around all over the place, it's great. And then you see the worst, which is Center Street and some of the vacancies near the library. So I'd kind of want to like get a really comprehensive understanding. Like, why have the buildings at Milvia University, these new, brand new buildings that are filled up with local business, and there are like lots of people going around? What have they done that say other buildings are not doing, that are having a hard time filling retail? I want to see like, basically, how, what is the issue? What was, a study of like what buildings have worked at really being conducted towards better pedestrian access and which ones haven't? That's the issue number one. And issue number two is, I think the tenant displacement for the, the commercial tenants is really important. Do not want Center Street, do like Milvia. And we got to figure out some, I, the whole scope being confined, all the development pressure confined in just one tiny little commercial corridor, I feel like is going to cause potential problems. If there's no way to expand that, like, I don't know why we don't allow residential uses in residential zones. I don't know why we can't expand commercial, like, again, just because a train stopped there? Okay, all right. But that's it.
No, you could. That wasn't great.
No, no, but I, we put everyone else to a timeline, so I'll obey one's. You can talk to me personally afterwards, but I have a lot of specific things that I want to talk about.
And I, I would like to say that I am in agreement with Blaine in that I think the ground floor, the ground level, and wherever, whatever we do is absolutely critical. And if we are not, if the people who are developing are not developing spaces that are the right size and the right scale, then I think that's probably something that we need to look at. When I was on the, another board, a board like Commissioner Hauser is, for which she's the executive director, we talked a lot about vacancy taxes, and I, you know, you know, I think that's a, something Berkeley ought to look at. So I really think that figuring out the ground plane is really, really important in all of these. I, I kind of agree that once the ground plane is lively and fun to walk through and has space for legacy businesses and, and has a laundromat and has places where people can go shopping and also where they can window shop at things that they can't afford to buy, which is sometimes fun, that, that it doesn't, in some ways, matter how tall the buildings are behind them. And so I'm not as concerned about the building height as I am about what is happening at the ground plane and however that can be integrated into this document and these recommendations. I think that's really, for me, a critical piece. And then I also think, relevant to the need to build as much housing as possible, is to all of us, and I put myself in this category too, we need to rethink the kinds of housing and who's living in them than we thought. You know, not everybody living in housing is a student, not everybody living in housing is a husband and wife, not everybody is an empty nester, not everybody is a, as a, you know, roommates. You know, there's all different kinds of families, and there's all different kinds of people willing to live in different kinds of housing. And it's not true that families are unwilling to live in apartments. And I think that's something for those of us that live in lovely, small Berkeley neighborhoods, we're not quite there yet, that many families in many parts of the world, people that have three children, just like I had growing up, in a very small apartment. It's not, you know, we just need to rethink who's living in them and what the families are and what our standards are. And so I would hope also that these documents would kind of talk about the variety of housing and the, and the expectations of who might live in and might be different, you know, 40 years from now, maybe we're going to have different understanding of what makes a community. And you can, you know, you can have a community in an apartment building. You know, anybody that's grown up in, you know, New York knows that. So, so I just hope that we kind of, that there's, I mean, I guess what I'm hoping is that there's some narrative part of this that's a little bit more like storytelling and a little less like the numbers and the, and the images that sort of gives a sense of what expansive future could be once we do whatever it is that we end up doing. That's my, I, I feel like we need to, you know, describe, all the people here that said they were supportive of housing, we need to, that needs to be reflected in somehow in these documents. So that's my, that's my soapbox. Okay. Now, what I think I'd like the commissioners to do, we have these questions at the end that the planning staff has left for us, and I thought maybe we should start with some of those specifics, now that we've kind of. Commissioner Hauser, do you want to say the? And you can, I was thinking maybe it would be a good idea to, if there's one of these questions that particularly you would like to speak to, that you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Could I just ask a question? I want to acknowledge the responses that Commissioners Wong and Owens raised on questions about detail. And I wondered if you guys are going, are you including the need to study which really basic vacancies and lessons lie?
Well, first of all, let me, you know, the question of vacancies did come up several times. Are you able to answer the question about vacancies and the vacancy rate in Berkeley? Vacancy rate?
Commercial?
No.
I can speak to that a little bit, yeah. So I think that there's a perception that residential vacancy is a lot higher than it actually is. We don't have great data on residential vacancies. There's the U.S. Census Bureau, through the American Community Survey conducts, and you know, if you look, we have around, I think we typically have around a five or six percent vacancy rate, which is pretty typical. You know, a lot of the new housing projects that have gone up in Berkeley, they might have a release sign because they have a lot of units. And there's mobility. You know, people in a big building with a lot of units, there might be somebody moving in and out every month. They usually have a couple, like, a couple of units vacant, and so they keep that release sign up. That doesn't mean that we have a higher vacancy rate. Also, student population, there's a lot, there's even more mobility, right, in Berkeley than there might be. But that doesn't mean we have a high vacancy rate. They're recently, so the city of Berkeley recently adopted a vacancy tax on residential units. And we just got the first set of data back from the mandatory reporting on vacancy. And that data implies that we have an extremely low vacancy rate of something like 1%. That's what the data implies. I don't believe that, that the vacancy rate is that low. But I certainly don't believe that we have an elevated vacancy rate.
What is the operative vacancy rate that you guys are working from? Is it 5%? I love.
You know, I don't wish for that. We're going to respond to questions from the commissioners. Don't be giving back.
I, I asked for this answer because I think one of the commissioners was interested, and we have several questions about it, and I also don't believe that we have a high vacancy rate. So, you know, so I wanted to confirm that.
Can I quickly address it?
Yes. Do you know the answer to my question?
Well, as terms of optimal economics, it's like, you know, whatever, something between like a 5 to 10%. But with respect to the thing that was just reported on, the vacancy tax, Berkeley side actually did a really good series about this. We passed Measure M, which is a vacancy tax. It's a tax on buildings that are, units that are vacant for longer than six months. So not the short-term vacancies where students moving in and out, I mean, there has to be vacancies, otherwise no one could move anywhere, right? But you're talking about the long-term vacancies that sit vacant for a very long time. That was reported to be 1.6% of the city's total housing stock. The Census Bureau's overall vacancy is closer to like 6 or 7% off memory, but obviously the vast majority of those are just short-term vacancies.
Okay, so this is, this is, that's it.
That's good.
What I'm trying to do is just make sure that we're not having a discussion based on inaccurate information about an important topic. And so I think, you know, this sort of gives us a sense of what is true and not true about it.
I'm happy to talk about it after the meeting.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not taking questions, I really want to get the commissioners. We had a chance for public comment, and if you have additional questions, why don't you ask me afterwards, and I'll see if we can get an answer, okay? Go ahead.
So try to run through the questions.
Whichever, I don't think, I think it's, you know, a fool's errand for us to try and go through every single question with every single commissioner.
I will, I will not.
So I think that each of us should pick whatever it is we specifically would like to talk about and talk about that one.
Yeah, so I will actually kind of verge one and three, because I think that the question regarding the corridors need character, we've established those businesses, the small businesses, legacy built businesses are the heart and soul of these places. And so I, I am really interested in focusing on what the, the design strategies, even the economic, that something pointed out, the collaboration with economic development is a, is a great idea for supporting the businesses in times of transition. And the design strategies mentioned by my fellow commissioners regarding the quality of space and the generous sidewalks, but also the things that help businesses get open quickly, like expedited permitting and stuff like that. So that, that I think is really what makes the corridor feel like what it is, that word character. And that's where we should be focusing as many carrots as we can, policy carrots.
Angela, that's, any of the others that you want to talk about?
No.
Okay. We're on the second page. There's, there's two pages of questions.
Oh, two, oh, two pages.
We can come back.
Well, we can come back. You want to come back?
No, I think I kind of, I think I kind of touched on them in my initial comments. I think, yeah, I'm focusing on those intentionally because I don't think that the building, as I mentioned in my previous content, building heights benefit people who need housing. I mean, we have lots of people who need housing. They otherwise are not a community benefit, and we should be focusing on that ground level experience.
Commissioner, good.
All right. So I have a good idea on how to resolve this tension between the housing and the businesses. And this is something that we can borrow from downtown Oakland, where commercial density does not count towards the residential density. And so in this case, what we could do is that if a floor of a building is at least half retail, it does not count towards the height limit. And that way, people are encouraged to provide real retail spaces and not just tiny little odds and ends. And I think the other important thing is to not allow any garage doors on the main street. If we are to have any, they should come in from the side or an alley. And then the step backs, I would not have any step backs because that, again, really complicates the layout of the ground floor, and that will make it harder to do retail.
Okay. All right, I'm going to step into the breach. And I, I will say I, I would support the, I think it's the alternative to heights across the board, and even, you know, Bushida, be even more ambitious. I mean, I think, again, these are our highest pedestrian-serving infrastructure, where you can really be a pedestrian and live a pedestrian life. The cars are a problem, you got to, got to deal with that, that traffic. But they're not, you know, they're not moving anywhere. The thing to do is to walk on these corridors. So I, I think just really sort of maximizing what we can get out of the walking, the walking life, so I would go for the upper limits on the height. I, I hear Commissioner Owens though about, I think, the kind of, I would like to see things zoned up all over, so we don't have these really more contentious conversations only about the quarters, but that's another thing. But I think related, you know, setbacks and step backs. But I think related, you know, setbacks and step backs, I would keep it simple. I agree, don't, don't add step backs. I don't actually buy the thesis that it reduces the perception of height. And I question whether that should be even a goal, given, I, I think that really 90% of your brain is focused on the ground floor. And it's really geometrically even hard to see the effect of a step, a step back from anywhere other than the middle of the street. So I would sort of say no on that. And I, I think a transition on the back to the, to the surrounding context, the step down in the back, kind of makes some sense visually because it reduces that quite a bit more starkly. And then finally, I'll just, sorry, I'm cramming too many in there. Just the last one maybe I'll say for now is objective design standards. Maybe we can really kind of restrain ourselves and focus them on the ground floor in really smart ways, like reverse engineer what has made this walking retail really good and make sure we get more of that. And let the rest of the building be designed by good architects, knowing that we won't see it in our daily lives as much as we'll see the ground floor. And honestly, I don't know that we've really gotten great results from objective design standards on other projects. I'm, I'm very humble about what we can do with them, so I have to be careful.
All right, so I'll, I'll just go back to the question that I mentioned before. This is for anyone sitting here, anyone in this room, I guess, about the density bonus. So I guess to articulate my question better, I noticed that it says 15, if a building provides 15% very low income and added 15% moderate income units, then they're eligible for an 100% density bonus. I'm wondering if those thresholds were decided by, oh, by setting it at 15 and 15% or these numbers, then construction will be more economically feasible. Because we want these units to be ultimately constructed, and that's why the limit needs to be there so that it's not too high as to like drive off developers or people who are building.
You know what, let me, let me interrupt. We don't usually do this, but because you're new and you haven't heard the whole density bonus thing, that might have been like a clarifying question at the beginning. So I am going to ask the staff to respond to that question.
And I appreciate Commissioner Wong erasing it because we're so confused by it.
So the state density bonus law is, is very complex, okay? It involves a lot of equations about a lot of different things. There are a number of levels of affordability. There's very low income, low income, moderate income, and then above that market rate. The income levels are based on median incomes per account, right? And then the state density bonus law, for different percentages that you give, that you produce at each different level of affordability, gives you a certain percentage of bonus. And there is one equation that allows you to get up to 50%, right? For instance, 15% VLI gets you to that 50%. But I'm going to throw out a number here, it's not the right one, just as an example. But if you do 15% of low income, you might only get a 30% bonus or something, right? And then there's a second bonus on top of that, that if you provide additional affordable housing, you can get up to an additional 50% bonus. So it's a very complicated equation based on what level of affordability and at what percentage to the base zoning that they provide. So it's not something that we set up, it's a, it's a state, it's part of the state density bonus law, and it's, it's extremely variable depending on a specific project.
Do you have any other questions? Is that? Let's, if we need a little bit more time just to understand this.
Just my thought, and maybe this originates from not knowing enough, is what, what happened if Berkeley had the requirement, had a higher requirement than what the state required?
So Berkeley has a 20% inclusionary requirement, and that could be satisfied by including 20% of the housing units on site as affordable units. And that 20% has to be split 50/50 between low income and very low income. The city council has, on a number of occasions, considered modifications to the inclusionary housing policy. And that's not part of the scope of this project right now. Certainly, it's related, but that's not part of what we've been asked to consider as part of this project.
Sorry, I don't know, more related to question. Is there any data on?
Yeah, OED actually maintains a database of ground floor, commercial occupancy by business type and vacancy. They update it at least once a year. We could probably pull that up, and we can send you a link, they publish it annually. So we have that. Generally, the corridors that we're talking about have maintained much lower vacancy rates than most of the other corridors in the city. They, they may have spiked a little bit during the pandemic, but they have continued to perform way better than most of the other districts. So pretty low vacancy rates. Again, a lot of the times, people actually consider a 5% commercial vacancy rate as healthy because that means that there's some mobility and opportunity for new businesses to move in. And it's pretty normal for a business occasionally to close, pretty typical. For a long time, um, at College Avenue, actually, it had a vacancy rate less than 5% around 2 or 3%. So the, like, these are corridors that are certainly high demand.
I would probably add this echo of Commissioner Owen's point earlier about really studying, like, why certain areas, or why certain ground floor retail areas are currently vacant and what makes other areas successful, if that has a good idea.
Yeah, I want to, if you would allow, I would like to speak to Center Street because it came up a ton at our community workshops, and it's come up tonight. The specific case, and so we're talking about the block of Center Street between Shattuck and Oxford. And there's a project, very high-density project proposed to that center. And they, in preparation for development, they basically decided not to renew their leases with any of their commercial tenants. I know that, that project expected to break ground by now. They have not broken ground. They expected and informed, they had actually already submitted building permit applications, which projects typically don't do. They don't typically spend the money on, it's like coming up with their design and submitting their application unless they really expect to proceed. You know, they don't, they don't spend money on the post-entitlement phase unless they're for real. And they did, they expected to break ground, and their financing fell apart. And that's why we have this situation. I personally don't think that it has to do with, I don't think it has to do with a particular, like, it's a reflection of the Berkeley market or even necessarily a policy failure of the city of Berkeley, right? It's certainly unfortunate, and we're, we're definitely talking about like, okay, what can we do? What should we be doing differently to make sure something like this doesn't happen again? What leverage do we have? By the way, we don't always have leverage, right? We can't require a property owner to renew a lease with a commercial tenant. You cannot do that, right? But it's something we're certainly looking at. I will, I, my understanding is that that project is still planning to move forward. They were in, they were in the office this week, meeting with the team. So I'm hopeful that they're actually going to break ground next year.
And this is just an example of the fact that it's sort of unpredictable what these, you know, what development happens and how it happens and all the things that, that could happen. And that's why we're trying to get this plan so that we can sort of have a way forward as, you know, as times change. But Commissioner Owens, you're.
Especially when the president tears steel for no reason. Okay, yeah. Great point about the commercial vacancies, that's why I wish we would expand our commercial areas so not just old train stops. Okay. I think the big thing for me is, I just came from a Baha meeting before this, you know, and they know me and I know them, and we're having a good time. And I think something that I really came to agree, agreement with on my, with my North Berkeley neighbors is that they like things to just look attractive. The height stuff is important, I know people get, it's one thing to look at height on a, on a scale model. I literally live between Solano and North Shattuck, I go to both almost daily. Height is not really something I'm looking at. I'm looking at, as people said, the ground floor. I'm looking at the building right there in front of me. This probably won't be super popular among some architects, but I do think that we should look, with respect to our design standards, into some kind of plan book or some pre-approved architecture that really looks good, that is popular. I don't like objective design standards that are super vague because they result in buildings looking like Lego blocks that are, you know, breaking up the massing. But you're already doing it for 648 with the townhomes. And so you're required to basically create catalogs of pre-approved designs. There are people, even the folks at Baha I was talking to are like, yeah, I really like the, you know, some of the revivalist-looking architecture, some of the downtown buildings. And I'm like, okay, got it. So maybe, I'm not saying it has to happen, I don't particularly care about it for North Shattuck where there's tons of contemporary architecture. But when you're talking about like college, I wouldn't hate if the, matter of fact, I would encourage perhaps the city to say, okay, we got some pre-approved designs for ground floor, we're not going to dictate floor arrangements inside, but the, I know we love architects and they're very hit or miss, and I love them and they're great. But hey, look, we got a catalog here of pre-approved designs. Some of them look mission revivalist, some of them look crasman-y, some of them have simple façades, white with, you know, orient, ornamentation and whatever. That's how a lot of houses were built in Berkeley in the first place, just straight out of catalogs. And I, I think that that would help people be more supportive of new housing. A lot of them really don't care about the density, not as much as they say, it just has to really look nice. And there are high-density buildings that can look nice. I'd rather, with special corridors like college, maybe Solano, not just leave that up to chance, especially since the parcels are so few anyways, you know? So I might not save the developer a couple extra bucks, here's your plan book. That's my opinion. I know not all the architects are going to agree with that, but.
Well, this architect doesn't agree. Let's just be clear right away. Let me say, so in my turn, I'd say that I, I am not that worried about building height as we've already talked about, but I think that it's probably a good idea, and I, to have some kind of step back in the neighborhood side of a, of a building. I don't think we need step backs and cutouts and all kinds of stuff in the corridor side and probably even on some of the adjacent streets. But I do think if there's a residential neighborhood back, that we should probably look for some kind of step down there. And I really disagree with Commissioner Owens. I don't think plan books are a great idea. I'm, I happen to think many of the new buildings, there's some that are quite elegant and some that aren't, which is exactly the same as true of all the how, the apartment buildings that we love now from the 1930s that everybody thinks are so beautiful. But at the time, they were developer buildings and some are nicer than others, and that's just the way a city is, some things are better. So I'm, I'm, as everybody that's been on the commission knows, I'm not a fan of objective design objectives. I really think we shouldn't have them, that we need to, you know, we need to, we need some flexibility in terms of materials, in terms of what kind of building, you know, who's in the buildings. What we think about daylighting has changed over time, what we think about mechanical systems has changed over time, how we understand ornament. You know, there's a difference between ornament that's actually made by human hands and ornaments that spit out of a, of a 3D printer. So do we really want the 3D printer ornament to be what we want in our buildings? I think not. So I'm, I'm not a fan of a plan book. No, no, no mission revival circa 2025 for me. Now, so we go on to some other questions. Let's go to another round. And then I think we'll have come to the end of this discussion and we'll wrap it up. And hopefully, you've gotten enough information to sort of help shape your next discussion with council. And then we'll have a break, and we'll go on to our two last items. Commissioner, how's, you have anything else you want to add?
No, I don't think so. I think there's some really good upcoming conversations to be had, and I'm eager to, to see small businesses who provide us that joy of dirt space, social spaces, civic spaces that we don't really give them credit for somehow supported and, and, you know, build us into sort of our physical planning and, and economic development thinking.
Anyways, my thought is that, sure, that ideally, we don't have plan books. But I think if we do make a concession to the things people are asking for, preserving the character, that's the one to give. Things like height setbacks, that actually affects how many people can live in a building. It affects what is possible to do. But if we just say, okay, we're going to make sure these new buildings look like the old buildings when you're walking down the street, that doesn't affect how many people can live in them. I think that's acceptable.
No, we haven't addressed the sort of the question about how much retail should be required or can residential be allowed on the ground floor. And I, I really struggled with this because I think that ground floor residential, if done right, can be a nice thing to walk past. It's kind of hard to get right, and it can have activating uses. I think lobbies, amenity spaces, stoops can be, can be part of a nice walking experience. And just to, you know, pick on a very easy target from Solano, you know, you can have a recent, you know, building, this isn't fair because it's a garage behind, but it's just, you know, it's housing, but it killed that part of the street. Sorry if anyone loves this project. So I, I think, so I did struggle with it. That said, I, I think that you were, I think staff and the report proposed pretty limited allowable residential on cottage, college and North Shattuck anyway. They were very small places. And my, my hit in looking at them was like, eh, no big deal. You know, it breaks up, maybe you want a continuous retail fabric that never ends, but if you had a couple of little residential patches, as you're proposing, it wouldn't be that bad. So that was my, my hit on that. And then the, the big question though for me is like, what, you're requiring developers, you know, to make ground floor retail space that doesn't fill up for whatever reason? And, and can you build in some flexibility to maybe have both? So I just wanted to show a project that, this is, this is called Zaccam-Tempe, Arizona. I was there looking at pedestrian-oriented development. And they did all these live-work units, and they built them, and it was, you know, designed to be the right floor-to-ceiling height for retail. And, and some of them have just this like lovely incubator retail in them, you know, that's making opportunities for, you know, like 700 square foot opportunities for, for people, but they can also be lived in too. So I, I don't know enough about it to sort of understand how you would zone that possibility in, but it seemed like having the, the flexibility and the spatial provision for the future could be a way to handle it so that, you know, they can just kind of respond to the market and be whatever they need to be for that time. And it's also, it's a unique type of entrepreneur that can take that kind of space, actually. And I think it's the kind of retail we're often interested in.
I'll probably just go on to Commissioner Owen.
Okay, I have two more quick ones. One, we heard a lot of talk about open space, and I actually do think, because I, I've been in this situation before with the Shattuck downtown road redesign where, oh, we should have done this differently, well, this was the time to bring it up. Okay, fine. So maybe for this round, when it comes to, in particular, North Shattuck where I live, I think there would be a good opportunity for that space for a road redesign to be coupled with this. It's two-lane road because the key trains used to roll down it, I don't know why. It's extremely crazy to cross by salves. That would be a lot of great opportunities for open space and parks and not for a sea of asphalt. That's, that's number one for me. I don't know how we would do that on Solano or Elmo, but maybe look at a green spaces. North Shattuck's an obvious one. The second one for me as well is, I, I would like to, and maybe this is a personal assignment, better understand grocery store redevelopment economics. Just because we have, I, I, North Berkeley in particular has an almost unparalleled amount of grocery store density. I've never seen any other urban place in the world. We have like five, which is great. And we want people to live by the grocery store. I think that's actually more important than commuter transit. And I want to make sure that if we rezone Andronicos and Safeway and the other Andronicos, that maybe something has to be given, maybe an exemption has to be made for them. I know grocery store margins are kind of thin. I don't want them to just sell out and it just becomes a non-grocery store use. I would like to see maybe some kind of study on like, hey, if you're a grocery store, you want to redevelop and there's something more walkable like Trader Joe's at university, what can be done to facilitate that? That would be my kind of two points.
Okay, well, does, if any of the commissioners would like to add one last word, here's your chance. Otherwise, I want to thank everyone for coming to talk about this. I think Steph, you have plenty of comments from us and from the public. And I think we'll just take a short break and then go to the other two items. So, let's say five minutes, we'll come back at five after five. So, thank you all for coming.